Hello, everyone.
I'm sure you're all right.
Where is that mic? Hello, everyone. Welcome to our first November meeting, our first November meeting, and certainly the first November meeting before the election tomorrow. So with that, would the Clerk call the roll?
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. And we are going to begin tonight, our special orders of the day, by recognizing the Palo Alto firefighters who responded to the wild land fires. And with that, let me introduce Chief Eric Nichols, who is going to talk about these incredible people whom I know are out of town for quite a while. So, thank you so much, and after you present, we're going to thank them as well.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers.
Are they all, are all of you the ones being recognized? What are you doing?
That's just a support crew. Yeah, we travel in packs.
Why are you at the back? Come on up front so we can see.
They're going to come up front.
Yeah, come on up.
Well, good evening. As they come on up here, Eric Nichols, I'm your fire chief. I'm here to brag a little bit about some of the amazing work that our firefighters do. And it's even better that Senator Hill is here this evening because he's been very instrumental on some of the state work that we've been doing around climate-driven fires and some of the important avocation roles that he's taken on behalf of not just our fire department, but departments throughout the state. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about what some of our fire crews did in July. So, on July 26th, at about 2:00 a.m., this is about the normal time that we get these calls for these large mutual aid deployments, a crew of four were dispatched. So, Captain Dave Doll, who unfortunately could not be here this evening, but the rest of the crew is here, apparatus operator Orley Hatfield, firefighter Manny Macias, and one of our brand-new firefighters Jeremy Palmetier are here. And they were dispatched to a very large urban interface fire burning in disease-stressed forests of Riverside County in Idowile, so a mountain community 466 miles from town. State OES calls it, you know, "One Team, One Fight." And we treat a call across the state as we treat a call across, you know, the street. We get up and we go, and we take care of business the same way we take care of business here. So, they drove all night, 466 miles. This was an arson-caused fire. There were 7,000 people evacuated, an entire mountain community that was evacuated. Five homes were destroyed and about 13,000 acres that were burned. I don't have the clicker, if you've got the clicker. So, a little bit of background about the state mutual aid system and why we do what we do. It's built around this concept of neighbor helping neighbor. When it gets into reimbursement, the State Office of Emergency Services handles this reimbursement, so our costs are recovered for these large incidents. I don't believe you know this, but on these large fires, 70% of the mutual aid is provided by local fire departments, not the state agencies, not the federal agencies. No agency could staff up that amount of resources and do it cost-effectively. So, when these fires happen, we're able to mobilize massive number of forces very quickly. Some of the work that I've been fortunate to testify in front of Senator Hill's committee, there's a very large coalition of fire service agencies, labor, counties, state, local, and federal that are working under this derisk, also known as disaster readiness for safer communities. And I'm proud to say that our representatives have been instrumental in supporting the efforts and voting for the efforts to really help us with the climate change. We are on the forefront of climate change when we go on these big fires, and I think when you see some of these pictures up here, you'll understand. So, this is what they found when they got down to the Cranston Fire. You've got fires that are burning off literally thousands of acres in a day. So, I've been in this business for 31 years. My first job was working on a hotshot crew for a Forest Service hand crew. And 31 years ago, if we did 1,000 acres in a 24-hour period, people would say, "Wow, that fire really got up and moved." We're doing 60,000 acres in an afternoon. So, just in my short 30-year career, you know, we've seen a dramatic change of what's going on in our forests. And really, you know, the monies that have been allocated to create healthier forests and getting to do some prevention work in some of these state responsibility areas and other local jurisdictions has been super helpful. So, this is what the crew found when they got down there. Next picture. We were very engaged on social media posting. This is probably one of our most popular posts that we've had in the last few years. I think the community has been incredibly supportive and very interested in what our crews are doing out on the fire lines. Now, when our crews go out, they're expected to do anything that a forest firefighter should have to do or a municipal firefighter. So, these crews did structure protection, they cut hand line, they put hose lays in. How many thousands of feet of hose do you think you guys put on the ground? Seven or 8,000 feet of hose. So, they'll cut a hand line, they'll put hose in, and I mean, this is not on flat surface. This is typically up-and-down surfaces. So, our crews are down on the Cranston Fire for two, they get two days down there, and the incident is kind of mitigated. They've directed the fire away from the populated areas and more into the unpopulated forests. And, next slide, please. And they are dispatched, redispatched up to the Mendocino complex. So, they don't even get home. They get tantalizingly close to home, but they are sent to another fire. And again, that's probably another 550 miles that the crews drive.
Eric, just to ask you, these are all the same people?
All the same crews. So, when we are deployed on these out-of-county strike team assignments, the expectation is you're gone for 14 days. And this is what our firefighters live with. This is our family lifestyle in the summertime. I kiss my wife and kids goodbye in the summertime, and there's a possibility I'm not coming home for two weeks. That's just how we all live our summers. If you know that you're up to go on these out-of-county strike teams and you could go out for 14 days, that's just how we roll, and that's part of, you know, our culture. So, they get up to the Mendocino complex, and this is the largest fire in California history. They were up there for the remaining days of their two-week deployment. This fire was so big, it burned into multiple counties, so Mendocino, Lake, Glen and Colusa Counties. Burned almost 460,000 acres, 280 structures were burned, and unfortunately, one firefighter who had traveled from Utah was killed on the fire when a tree fell and struck him after a large fire retardant plane had dropped fire retardant. So, these fires that we saw in July were, again, fires that burned, the behavior was so unlike anything we've seen. And then, let's go to the next slide here. Now, I want to brag a little bit about our crews. This is Captain Dave Doll in the middle, who's unable to be here this evening. We had just promoted Dave to captain two weeks earlier. One of the things that our department is known for is how we train and prepare our people for next assignments, for their next promotion. And when you see Captain Doll here, he's giving a safety briefing to the crews because the fire is coming towards these homes, and he sounds like a 30-year veteran, but we just promoted Captain Doll, so. We're going to see if we can.
We have the war crews up here, the hand crews, they're doing a defense, prepping this road, getting a lot of the trees in the brush further back off this road. The fire has jumped multiple different spots and has jumped across the creek bed and the river bed, which we were trying to hold it to. Now, it's pushing up towards houses. So, essentially, we're trying to keep this fire from getting to this house and other houses in the area, using the driveway as a natural barrier.
So, when you get down there, if we get separated from each other, make sure that we talk, you guys talk with each other about your own safety zones and escape routes. At the end of the day, if everything hits the fan, escape back up here. We know it's clear, we know there's open safety zones up here. Right here would be a great one for a rendezvous if things really go bad.
So, with that, we want to, I want to bring these three up, gentlemen. Come on up. This is a picture of the strike team on one of their last shifts on the Mendocino complex. Would you guys like to say anything?
We've done enough.
I've done enough. This means a lot to us when you ask to come up and recognize our crews, and I speak on behalf of the 105 women and men of the fire department to say thank you. It does mean a lot that we're able to come up and get recognized by council, but these are the three that did the work, and I just want to, you know. That's it, unless you have any questions for us?
Thank you so much, and I want to see if any of my colleagues have questions, and they do. But do any of the three of you want to say even one thing about, you know, was this one of the hardest fires you fought, or was there anything about this that was so unique that you'd love to mention it to us?
The only thing I'd like to say is that it wasn't just...
You've got to get really close to the mic.
It wasn't just us that put ourselves out, it was everybody that was still here at the department that had to support us while we were gone and all the positions that had to be filled. So, it wasn't just recognizing us, it was recognizing everybody in the department for, you know, supporting everybody that had to be gone at the same time for that amount of time.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, because that's absolutely true. The guys who are at home need support. Either of the other two like to say anything?
No.
Okay. Congratulations. That was really a, to fight at one end of the, you know, the state and then go up to the other end of the state is really, that, you really did double duty, so thank you. I have lights from Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Wolbach.
Eric, as chief, maybe you'd like to introduce the three gentlemen here?
Sure.
And then, I have a question or comment.
Sure. Manny Macias is one of our firefighters. Orley Hatfield, our apparatus operator, so he drives the apparatus. And then, I've got right behind me Jeremy Palmetier, who's one of our brand-new firefighter paramedics.
Thank you, gentlemen. And having been to some promotion events, it is quite a family that the fire department is, and we know that it's not just the people who are in uniform, but also the families. And so, our extended thank yous also to your families who support you and doing the work you do to protect us all. Thank you so much.
And thank you for introducing them. Thanks, Karen. It's really important that we know who you are. So, secondly, Councilmember Wolbach, and then Councilmember Fine.
Picking up on some of the chief's words, you know, I actually have literal nightmares that I sometimes remember when I wake up of our local foothills on fire. We've had too many fires close to us and too many big fires in our state. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you're doing to combat, you know, wildfires around the state. The fact that we have this sort of mutual aid that we do gives me some hope that if something does strike up really close to home, we'll be able to respond. I'd also, again, appreciate everything that the whole department does to backfill when you're out on deployment elsewhere. Thank you.
And Councilmember Fine.
So, just building on my colleague's comments, thank you to all the men and women of the Palo Alto Fire Department. Looking at some of the pictures of those flames, you have true courage to race into that and actually do some good for the citizens there. And as Councilmember Wolbach said, the mutual aid system is really beneficial to all of us. And, you know, God forbid there's something here in Palo Alto. I know we'll get help from our state partners and municipal partners around the state, so thank you all.
Two more, Councilmember Phil Seth, and then Scharf.
Glad you guys are home safe. Well, that was short and sweet. I also wanted to thank you guys. I know it's a lot of hours, and being away for 14 days has got to be a fairly large sacrifice. I just wanted to say, no, that we actually really, really appreciate the efforts you guys, and we fully support you guys doing those kind of things. It's so important. So, thanks for all you do for the city, and thanks frankly for what you do for the state. So, thanks.
And Councilmember Koo, and then Councilmember DeBois.
So, with emergency preparedness, obviously, it's neighbor taking care of neighbor, and so I want to say that's really greatly appreciated by a lot of the residents over here for your care for us here at home and also going so far and beyond, and also to say thank you to your families for the extended periods that you're away. Thank you to all of you.
Councilmember Tom, and then Greg, the other Greg.
Councilmember Tom. I just want to echo what my colleagues say and said thank you. And I had a quick question for the chief. Like, when something like this happens, how come they don't, how come you don't switch out crews when you're going from like one fire to another fire?
See, I knew I couldn't get out of answering a question in front of council. I feel like it's an obligation, like, so we do, if the crews get to 14 days and they're still needed on the incident, we have a mechanism in place within the county that we would rotate the entire strike team. So, we would send fresh crews up representing the five agencies that were up on the fire, and then we would rotate the crews, leave the apparatus up there, and then bring the crews that have timed out, bring them back home.
Yeah, but it's 14 days regardless of how many different fires.
Correct. And the reason for that is there's a lot of paperwork and accountability pieces behind the scenes that has to be done to do that. So, it's not just an easy thing where you swap out one crew for another. There's a whole tracking for both safety, primarily safety for the firefighters, but also for the reimbursement process. And that's the number that the county chiefs have agreed to. The Forest Service is a little bit longer, they're 21 days before they wrote their mandatory rotation, but it's really for sort of the health and safety of the crews to get them back home, get them refreshed, get them back with their families.
Yep. Great. Thanks.
And Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for going out there. You know, these firefighters, these wildfires are just terrible, so I think you helped save people's property and perhaps even lives. My dad actually, for the city of LA, actually worked for a fire department, so I definitely appreciate what you guys are doing, although he's a mechanic, so he didn't actually, he was on the front line like you guys, so I definitely appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
So, let me ask the one sort of pedestrian question. Where do you eat and sleep? I'm serious. Do you have to sleep in your trucks?
When we're out deployed, we eat as we go, as we do work. There's really not time for breaks when we're deployed. But then, we do get an off day where we're back at base camp, and it's set up much like military base, where there's a kitchen, sleeping facilities and such. But when we're out on the line doing work, it's, you make do with what you got.
It's tough duty. It really is. You know, I appreciate that. You're not sleeping in your bed, and you're certainly not eating probably what you're used to eating, so.
Correct. 24, usually it's 24 hours out on the line. They'll take two sack lunches with them, one for lunch, one for dinner, and they'll be out for 24 hours, and then they're back in the base camp, which is basically like a, you know, a spring-up city for like 3,000 to 5,000 people that's set up in about 24 to 36 hours. And there's, back to what Councilmember Tanaka said, it's one team and one fight, and everybody's part of that, the caterers, the cooks, the mechanics. Everybody has an important piece.
Oh, it's not end-viable. It really isn't. But thank you so much for doing it. We really appreciate it. And thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All of you, all the rest of you as well. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I don't want to have to do that. And thank you, Eric. And next on our agenda tonight is something I've been looking forward to, which is to welcome Senator Jerry Hill. And we have lots of questions for him tonight, and it's just a pleasure to have you here. So, are you going to introduce your staff, or do you want me to?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Let me give a little background on you first. I've known Jerry for a really long time, and we actually sat next to each other on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So, we have, we've known each other for quite a while. We conferred when he was running for the Senate, which was interesting. And I've been watching him from afar and admiring his work, and it's a great pleasure to welcome both Jerry and his staff here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it really is great to be here. I am accompanied tonight by Lisa Chung from our office, who does a great job assisting, and she will be taking some notes tonight as I will. And this is an opportunity for me, but also, it's a fun time, because I don't get a chance too often to sit and chat about some of the issues that are critical, especially to the city of Palo Alto. What is important, and I'd like to, for tonight, one thing that would be helpful for me is, I know there are some questions that you have that we can chat about, but also the opportunity for me to really get a good understanding of where the city and where you feel, how you feel about some of these issues. And because there will be a lot happening next year in the legislature, some of it will be, will impact the city, certainly impact Palo Alto as well. So, I think it'd be important for me to get some direction from you tonight in that. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Good. And you can, you can perhaps give us a, in fact, it's one of our very first questions. What will, do you think, the priority legislative issues be next year?
The, well, the issues, issues will, I mean, certainly for me, a lot of the issues will be related to some of the things that I've been involved in in the past, consumer protection, consumer safety, utility safety. We're trying to look at that, and it does give an opportunity tonight as we recognize your great utility. I just, I'm so excited every time the city of Palo Alto's utility is in Sacramento, we come and chat. It's just, I'm so proud, so proud to be able to represent Palo Alto and the fact that they have such a great municipal utility.
Yeah, they do.
They are outstanding, and I know they're being recognized tonight as well. But in terms of next year, I think we will see a number of issues and areas that, for my legislation, as we're trying to formulate it, consumer protection, as I mentioned, other work around the utilities and especially the investor-owned utilities, but also, I think we will see a lot of, there's increased and additional legislation related to housing. As we've seen in the past couple of years, there is a feeling, I think, in Sacramento by many that cities have not done their part. And as you saw in some of the legislation last year that came up that was quite strong, and that legislation didn't get very far, it was, you know, certainly stopped at an early point, but the author has indicated that that legislation or a form of it will be coming back this year, this next year. So, I think that if, you know, cities have been, and the sad part about the legislation that we see is it's a one-size-fits-all. You can't just legislate, say, "Well, this city's going to be able to do this." You know, when you look at some of the requirements and the mandates of some legislation, it just won't work in some locations. Can't work, shouldn't work. And it would change not just the character, but certainly the congestion management of many cities as well. So, I think that will be one of the issues we'll see. We'll also see in education, I think, an effort coming forward to change the, here again, looking at local control. I represent, I think, 35 school districts. The question always comes about, is there a need for 35 school districts in this area? The governor did some major efforts to bring it to local control and allow a lot of the efforts there with more funding for education, but we're not seeing the results. And if you look at the trajectory of improvement, it'll be to the next century before we get to something that's adequate or acceptable, I think. And that's what the pressure will be on to make changes there. And I think similar to housing, it will be applied similarly to education, where there will be more and stronger efforts in Sacramento on influencing school districts and their local control in a lot of areas. So, that's the, another area that I think will be of concern. I will be looking at certainly wildfire issues, and Chief Nichols and his, the department, again, you have such outstanding facilities and services and their efforts in going around. He made the comment, and he's absolutely right, climate change, we're seeing the effect of that. But the reason climate change is having such a strong effect on our wildlands is because we've neglected them. We haven't put the resources into clearing those areas or as having preventative fires, those types of things that have made a difference in the past. And that's really what the legislation at the end of session put a considerable amount of money into that clearing one of the wildlife, of the wildlands, as well as allowing for preventative fires to kind of clear those areas out so we don't have it in the future. So, those are just a couple of things that I think we'll be seeing.
So, because you have a list of questions in front of you, which are very good, but I'd like to have the rest of my colleagues be able to question you as well. So, if I were to start down here with Tom DeBois and kind of work our way up so that everybody can, you can ask a new question, or you can ask one of the ones that you submitted, but I certainly would have asked about affordable housing, so I've gotten my question in and well-answered. And I think you're right, Jerry. I think there will be a lot, a lot of, not only from Weiner, but I think others are also going to bring forth other affordable housing bills. So, starting with you, Tom.
All right. Well, welcome, Jerry. Take a seat here. I don't know if you're intending to answer a lot of these questions as we go through, but you also kind of asked how we feel about issues, and I'm glad you started with kind of local control. And again, I think the peninsula is particularly challenging, just this kind of this narrow land strip, you know, with water on one side and hills on the other, and kind of one-size-fits-all is pretty difficult, can be difficult. I think another thing that we've been talking about here is that housing, working in the housing isn't necessarily going to solve our traffic problems. And, you know, we have a lot of commuters, and some form of congestion relief is, we really need to start focusing on that. And one of the questions I put down had to do with state funding for grade separations. That's going to be a huge issue for our congestion issues in Palo Alto. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
No, I could, if you'd like, Tom. I mean, go ahead, if you want to finish.
Well, and then there's another question here about, I think, with the new governor and kind of the...
Which one do you want answered the most, Tom?
Well, I'm just going to add a couple more. So, the whole issue about kind of merging our electric grid and what the impact on our ratepayers will be, and also the ability for us to have a clean energy source.
Are you hearing everything?
Yeah. Yeah, and then the last one, it's a big one. I mean, we're looking at potentially having to restructure our city budget as we look at unfunded pension liabilities. So, I guess my three questions would be around grade separations, kind of the shared grid, and what you're hearing about kind of unfunded pension liabilities and what other cities are doing.
Right. Well, those are, those are three of the big questions that we have for the night. But let's start with the grade separations. I mean, that's something that's near and dear to my heart because I've been a strong fan of Caltrain and the ability that it has to move a tremendous number of people on that right-of-way. We have 60,000 or 70,000 a day now, and we could almost double that in the next few years with electrification. But the more trains we have, the more people are going to be stopping at grade crossings, and that doesn't help anyone. It doesn't help certainly our climate environment because of the gas and the carbon that's being emitted from that. So, it, there needs to be grade separation and funding available for that. I know there's some money available through VTA that we may see for that. The state in high-speed rail has been slightly generous. There are a couple of grade separations in San Mateo County that are, were on the list that are getting some funding from high-speed rail. I've been using, my argument has been high-speed rail, you know, frankly, we may never see it here as high-speed rail coming from Los Angeles. I mean, the benefit would be if it came from, you know, Fresno or Merced and Ceres, and could bring people that are living there and working in this environment. But where I see it is we've been able to capitalize on the money for the electrification project from high-speed rail and with some for grade separations, because they need, it's in their interest to do that as well. So, I think there's an opportunity, if we work closely with them, to get some funding. At the end of the day, as you know, there was an agreement made over an eighth-cent sales tax increase that would go on the ballot in 2020. That was an agreement made with Samtrans. They have their local measure on the ballot tomorrow. And from a timing standpoint, and that the next opportunity in 2020, the eighth-cent sales tax, much, I don't want to say much of that money, but a large portion, that will bring in, I think, about $80 million a year, and a large portion of that, over and above the operational cost, can be set aside, bonded for grade separations. We know the cost of grade separations continues to rise, but I think there is a real... real opportunity for some dedicated funding for grade separations, and they're drastically needed. Pension reform, as you know, the legislature a few years ago made some reforms in changing the, the timing and the requirements for pensions. And then there was a bill this year by Senator Glazier to allow for an alternative, when a new employee came in, they could go have a state system or they could have basically a 401K or, and put their funds and the state funds into that and then control it and manage it themselves. That bill did not go very far because, as we know, labor is not supportive of that approach at all. I think we need to make, in that particular legislation, I frankly think we should allow for some choice and some opportunities for employees. And the, and cities should look at, I know there's still a court case involved now that the governor is looking, waiting to hear on, on some of the aspects of how local, we can change retirement benefits once an employee is, has been vested and has been retired. Can you make, go back and make changes after that? That, we will see if that's possible. But I, I think we need to do something. Education is being affected more, but you're, I mean, cities are now, so much of their increased income is going towards pension obligations, and it's not sustainable. It is truly not sustainable. So we need to see something, and I'd be happy and enjoy working if we can create and craft something that, a suggestion that you may have to do that. The last one was on-
The grid. Regional power grid?
There was an effort, as you know, this last year to regionalize the grid. You know, we have the California Independent Service Operator in Folsom that manages the California grid, does an excellent job of it. And they were able, a couple of years ago, when we had the shooting at the Metcalf substation in Santa Z that, in the middle of the night, some high-powered rifles put out and destroyed a number of transformers, they were able to immediately reroute the power to get us, keep us operating. They're doing a good job, but there's been, and the governor was pushing this year for a regional grid, to expand our influence, expand the grid to take in the western part of the country. It has advantages because supposedly we could sell, you know, our renewables better and instead of having more than we need, we could be able to utilize that. The problem with the legislation and we, the Democratic Caucus, when we met in the Senate discussing this, it became clear that the one concern is we would, you know, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, oversees the grids in every state. They would oversee the grid, the regional grid, as they do ours. But once we expand to the, to a regional effort and then start taking on the coal plants, the coal entities and not, you know, restricting the coal entering into the grid, that's when we see a federal involvement that then they would put, you know, then they would then feel that we are kind of poking them. And I think they would take action that would then influence and affect the entire operation of our grid.
Yep.
So right now, they're leaving us alone because we're not doing anything that's challenging the federal position. But if we were to do, so that was, the governance of the system was the most powerful argument against it, as well as labor was the other part. The solution, part of it was this year, what we would approve in the legislature was to allow the Energy Commission to take a bite at this apple and try to develop their own governance system or develop a plan for governance and the operation of the regionalization of the grid, and then bring it back to the legislature for a final approval. I felt and others were not comfortable doing that. We just, we wanted to see more meat to the system that would be, that would not, could not adversely affect California the way it is now, it could and would. And especially, you know, labor has concerns about it as well, which I think influenced the decision. So the long and short of it is, I think there will be continued efforts on the part, certainly with a new governor, may not be as strong in pushing it, but the conversation will continue. I don't know if we'll see something until we can resolve the governance issue because no one, right now, the governor appoints all of those people. If it were the regional effort, every other state would be, we would be a shared governance, which I think is dangerous for California.
Thank you for that. I think the other-
Tom, why don't we let Karen ask?
Yeah, just a quick thing on that, but it'll be done. But I think the other concern to keep in mind is that for small utility like ours, it may actually force our rates up because of the transmission line costs.
Absolutely, transmission costs, and that's a very good point because we would be, that was the other downside, is that we would be saddled with the distribution and transmission costs of bringing that electricity to here.
Yeah, so if you could keep the-
And a local utility would be paying it.
Yeah, so keep, keep our small utilities in mind.
Made your point.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, why don't we hold our questions to one? And we said we'd be done by 6:15. I think we'll probably push it to 6:30, but I know that there are lots of good questions and even better answers.
I have a-
So, Karen?
Yes, thank you also for being here. It's been far too long since we've had time together as a body with you. So, thank you for coming. So mine's actually kind of a two-part question, and you touched on it, having to do with fires, forest fires and kind of appropriate, since we've had our special recognition earlier. But can you be a little bit more specific about what, what kind of funding, support organizations we've invited across the state to help fight fires? And also, is there, is there money being devoted to and is there research going on on new ways to potentially fight fires? I don't know what that would be because it's complicated, water, of course, but there are fire suppressants and those also have an effect. So I'm not, I don't know what that is, but is there any kind of research going on about best ways to develop other fire suppressants? And then the other piece of that question is, I guess, going back to the first, the first part, is the funding. So organizations now and entities now are working out there in like 100-acre plots, you know, trying to thin out forests so that there is not so much fodder there, so much kindling there, if you will. But that's not going to get very far, 100 acres at a time. So what kind of research and funding can you say, and how's it being dispensed?
Well, what we, what we saw in, in the legislation at the end of the session were a couple of things. One, there was a small amount of money to help with the, you know, the regional response and readiness for, for our first responders, as we saw today. The other, there was 200 million for Cal Fire, which is not, through 2023, which is not a lot of money. And that's for forest health prevention, fuel reduction, and, and then that way allow for the prescribed burning that they're going to start to try to thin those forests and clean them out. But what we found and as we saw from Cal Fire investigative reports over the last year's fire, the October fires of last year, that of 16 fires that they've investigated, 11 were caused by the utility that had control of the wires.
Wow.
So a fire, you know, we talk about all the brush, we talk, it takes a spark to start a fire. And if you don't have the conditions for the spark, you won't have the fire. And that's regardless of the wind blowing and other condition, unless lightning, but that, in these cases, 11 of the 16 were caused by PG&E power lines.
Wow.
And, and not just caused by their power lines, it was, let me see, that it was caused by their, put it this way, the cause of the fire has been turned over to the district attorneys for prosecution of violation of laws and rules. So it isn't just at the wire, because as we know, we can talk about inverse condemnation, which is another major issue that the utilities are concerned with, and certainly Palo Alto utility is as well. But the inverse would affect if it were started by a wire that just, you know, happened to, you know, the wind was blowing so hard, it may have done something, you know, some unusual circumstance, or that the wire caused the fire. But in these cases, it's negligence, is what we've seen. And that, and just last, this week, there were two fires in the Thomas Fire in, from San Diego, Southern California Edison, the two fires in, by Monticello and in Santa Barbara last year. San Diego Edison came out, and of the two fires, they clearly, it's been defined and investigated, that in their investigation says they caused that fire. It was their, their fault that it started. So I think that's an area where we can prevent fires, is if, in the major fire last year, the Thomas Fire has not been released as terms of the investigative report yet. And that's why the legislature gave, I didn't support it, I was the only no vote, to give PG&E a bailout over the liability for last year's fires. And that's what we will, we will see. But it, so that's, I guess, to answer the question, that's, I think, what we really need. In terms of suppression, I have not heard of any, but I'm sure the science is there for fire science to develop a strategy for that or a better approach to fire suppression. But if we don't create the spark, we won't have the fire.
So just very quick, very quick follow-up to that is, we've all seen how PG&E is now going in and clear-cutting on either side of their power lines. That doesn't seem like really the answer to me, or is PG&E being, is there legislation that require PG&E to better insulate their lines?
The, to better insulate their lines?
Yeah, or repair their lines, or whatever it takes.
Yeah, it's, you know, as you know, there's a certain clearance requirement. I don't know whether, it used to be four feet, I don't know if it still is, four feet on either side of a wire that has to be cleared from that. And as we know, they're not the most sensitive in terms of tree trimming as they go through there. It's, and they have neglected doing that over many years. They have not been the most efficient in vegetation management, and that's, a result has been the fires that we've seen. So now they are on top of that more, just as we saw with their gas lines over the last few years, and the way in which they've created more, the easements that we all have, they're making sure that they're clear above, and that's been a real inconvenience for homeowners. It's the same with this. And so we haven't changed the requirement legislatively. I've tried to direct the Public Utilities Commission to make those changes to it because they don't, they like, they would rather, and they should be, the ones that do what's best practices. And we've seen best practices. Frankly, San Diego Gas and Electric after their major fire in 2007, where they destroyed, they destroyed a large part of San Diego County, they learned from that. Their best practices just were not followed by PG&E in terms of weatherization, proper weather monitoring, de-energizing lines, doing certain other things that they did not follow, which were the best practices, and they should have. And they're doing it now, this year they are, but it's a little late.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Adrian.
So thank you, Senator, for joining us tonight. Thank you, Mayor and City Manager, for putting this on tonight. One comment and two quick questions. So one, I want to associate myself with Councilmember DeBois on issues of funding for grade separations and congestion management. I know Senator Bloom has a bill right now about congestion management for some of the major cities. Personally, I would love to see that expanded to medium or smaller cities. Two quick questions. So one is on the-
So Adrian, if you could put that, you know, let's make a note of that so we can see how we can look at that legislation and see if we can make some amendments.
Thank you. Two quick questions. One is on the California Voters Rights Act, which is increasingly being used to force cities to break apart into districts. I'm wondering if there's any movement in the state legislature on addressing those issues. And the second is on a number of the questions we have here. You know, of course, last year, Senate Bill 827 kind of became a dinner table number, which I think surprised many people across the state. I was one of the few local electeds who came out in support of it. And I'll just tell you, as a, as a train city planner, as a lifelong Palo Alto resident, and as a current city council member, I'm increasingly of the belief that those kind of solutions are needed at the state level and local level. Just for, to put a pin in that, this year in Palo Alto, we're on track to roughly build something like 60, 70 housing units, and we've got 60 or 70 housing units also coming off the market. So we're going to reach a net zero when our comprehensive plan calls for us building roughly 300 units a year. So I'd just love to hear your thoughts on the CVRA and on kind of housing action at the state level.
Right, well, on the voter right, the California Voters Rights, Voter Rights Act, you know, I've not heard of any movement or anticipated legislation or any, anything in Sacramento to affect that. I think people have looked at the requirements of many jurisdictions to change the manner in which they elect their governing boards as something that is a better approach. But I think that it's a conversation based on the changing demographics of California that we should have in Sacramento. And I think that that's, to see if it is actually accomplishing what its goal is and what it's intended to do, or is it creating something that is not what we want and the opportunity. So that would be something that could be and should be done. In terms of the housing, as I mentioned, even, you know, Senator Weiner indicated that he will be bringing something back. And I think the message was clear from many legislators because they heard it loud and clear from their constituents and their council members that, that there needed to be perhaps a little more sensitivity and discretion on the part of a city. Because I guess if you look at some cities putting an eight-story or a five-story building in a one-story or two-story neighborhood, probably isn't going to work very well. And, and I think that, that would get, that was enough, I think, to really turn people's heads away from that legislation. I think that there are possibly some changes that could make it work, and, and that, we may be seeing that. So I think it's, I ask the city to please watch that legislation and any other thoughts that you may have, and I'm happy to do what I can with you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Corey Walmbach.
Thank you for being here, and thank you to former colleague Lisa Chung for being here as well. What I'll do is offer just a few comments, and if you're, welcome to, of course, to respond to any of them, but then just one big question, as the mayor asked. First, I just want to say thank you for your ongoing efforts to have greater transparency about surveillance technology and to preserve privacy and have transparency in government at the state level. As you know, you know, I've, we've moved forward here in Palo Alto. Councilmember Scharf and a couple others joined me in introducing that effort a couple of years ago, and we have now put that into place, and that is now the law of the land in Palo Alto. Joe Semidion's implemented it at the county level. I personally very much support your continued efforts to do the same at the state level. On measure, was it Prop 10, the repeal of Costa-Hawkins, we'll find out tomorrow whether that passes or doesn't. If it does pass, I would be interested what powers the state might have to make sure that that passage is not exploited by cities to prevent production of new housing where it's needed and is appropriate. And if it doesn't pass, I actually would support a reform of Costa-Hawkins that would, instead of having the fixed 1995 date, after which no property could have rent stabilization applied, it should a city choose to explore rent stabilization or pursue it. I'd be interested in a conversation about a rolling date to say, after 20 or 30 years of being on the market, any new property could be eligible for rent stabilizations in cities which have rent stabilization. So that way, there wouldn't be, you know, you'd have enough time for investors and property owners to recoup costs such that they wouldn't be discouraged from providing new stock. And as property becomes older and becomes more naturally affordable as it becomes older stock, that would be the time when you'd be more likely to see middle or lower-income people living there. And at that point, the rent stabilization would be applied to those properties, protecting those who need it the most. On housing, I will put myself maybe somewhere between where I think most of my colleagues are and where Councilmember Fine is. I was initially opposed to SB 827, and just before I was killed, actually, I shifted my position, wrote to Senator Weiner that I changed my position to neutral. Not opposed, but still not supportive. I thought it needed a lot more work. I appreciated that he took time to listen to me when I reached out to him personally to discuss my concerns, and I appreciated that he had introduced and added to the bill a lot of protections to prevent displacement and provide right-of-return, things like that, and to moderate what, you know, limit how severe its impacts would be. It still wasn't something I felt comfortable supporting, but I think the point here is that cities do need to pull our weight, and we have in the past, and we're still not doing that. But as we are trying to do a better job, I appreciate having the nudge from the state, but we need that flexibility and we need carrots, not just sticks. On transportation, you know, in Palo Alto and neighboring cities, as you know, we've started exploring and creating transportation management associations where we get the employers, including in this case, the city, working together to, to get our employees out of their cars. Mountain View, you know, they got, you know, Google and LinkedIn and Intuit working together to do that and to run shuttles. And we're now talk, starting to talk across city lines about having our TMAs even coordinate with each other. And so if there is any level of state support legislatively, funding, et cetera, that would be very helpful. Just a last couple of comments and then my, my question. On grade separation, I'll also emphasize- On grade separation, I'll also emphasize that at a recent local policymakers group, they said that they've modeled that they might have demand for four times the current usage of Caltrain. And that would be great, but obviously, that's not compatible with a single at-grade crossing. And separating 42 at-grade crossings is an enormous undertaking, would take years, decades even, to stage all of them. And so how we even think about the future of Caltrain as they're going through their business plan and what follows, I think is very important. And your leadership and support, strong support for whether it's funding, changing the business model, changing the management structure, I mean, we need to think outside the box. And lastly, and this is where my question is, sea level rise. Huge portions of Palo Alto and a lot of your district, both on the coast side and on the bay side, are at serious, I'd say, almost existential threat from sea level rise. Like the grade separation, this is a huge infrastructure undertaking, and in looking for how to fund that, not just for the Bay Area, but for the state as a whole, while the federal government ignores the issue. I wonder, and this is my, my big question, do you-
Big question?
Yes. My, this is my one big question, which you might not have an answer for right now, which is, do you think there's an appetite in Sacramento? Or is it worth initiating the conversation about a real carbon tax? Not just cap and trade, but going to a full carbon tax and using the funding from that to pay for the major infrastructure changes that will be necessary to prepare ourselves for rising seas?
Well, and I mean, I'll be brief with the answers to these, and thank you for the comments on the transparency and the surveillance equipment and stuff. You are much more successful than I have been in my efforts. And I, the interests that are involved in that have been very strong, and it's mainly, you know, law enforcement, the law enforcement community has been very challenging to, to work with on that issue, to come to some agreement, and it's been, been challenging. The sea level rise, I actually met with, it would, their number, obviously, sea level rise has a lot of dimensions to it, and a lot of areas of involvement. I know I met today, actually, with the new Caltrans director for the area, Bay Area, and we were talking about how, what they're doing, because I was concerned about, especially Highway 1, and, and you look at 101 in certain areas that are, you know, right at sea level. And they are actually working with, closely with M T C, for your M T C directors, to, to look at, almost triaging where the resources need to be placed, the limited resources at this point in time. I do think that, you know, the new governor will look at these issues and, and I think take them to a different level, in terms of certainly, sea level rise and climate change are important to Governor Brown, and he's done an excellent job. I think the new governor will be taking it to the next step of now, how do we deal with it at ground zero? What are we going to do to implement some of these plans? How are we going to get there? How are we going to protect the, the area that we have? I mean, certainly, the, the global look at the carbon footprint, and that, that's one thing, now we have to get the, and I think we'll see that, and I think that it's forced upon us, and that we will be doing more. And I think the resources will be there to, to adequately fund some of the projects that are necessary. Certainly, it's a long-term project, but it, as long as our economy keeps going, we'll be fine.
Thank you, Senator.
Thanks.
Mr. Vice.
Vice Mayor Philson.
Thank you. Well, we're already on, we're already on most of the major stuff here, which is good. Let me just, you know, throw my, you know, throw my sticks on top of the, the grade separation issue too, which I think is, you know, it's, it's going to be very important up and for the whole region, actually.
Absolutely.
And I'm just going to observe that, I mean, I think Corey raised the interesting issue of 42, 42 grade crossings. I mean, if in fact you believe that the Bay Area is the economic engine of the state, right?
It most definitely is.
Right? And that solving our transportation and housing issues is going to be crucial to allowing this region to continue to scale, because you've got almost as many people leaving the Bay Area as arriving now, right? Then, transportation on the peninsula, there's really only one way to do it. And if you were, if you stepped back and, and looked at it from, because we're looking at it, geez, how much money can we get? You know, what's the minimum cost we can do and so forth? If you stepped back and looked at this as, you know, we're going to design something for the next 100 years, right? We'd probably be looking at different kinds of approaches than we all are individually with the 42, the 42 separate grade crossings. And so I realize that, I mean, even as long as this has taken, it's still pretty new, right? But, you know, if there were going to be some, some, some enthusiasm to look at this as a high-level holistic kind of thing, and maybe this is worthier of a, of a different kind of approach in each city, doing their own grade crossings together, that would be welcome from, from Sacramento. There probably, I mean, probably people aren't grappling with the stuff now, but, but that would be really good, right?
You'd have a, a state approach to all of the 42 grade separation.
Exactly. I mean, I mean, I mean, sort of, I don't know if this is the right answer or not, but you look at it and you go, why is this thing-
Funding is a great idea, but I think the design and the layout-
Why isn't this thing in a tunnel from South San Mateo to Transbay Terminal, right?
Right. Because both cities, as we know, you know, they want, either we're going to put the train below or up, or how, you know, that's, that's all more of a, here again, a local, and we want to leave it that way as much as possible.
But, yeah, but if, if there were, if there were enthusiasm for a regional solution that took a more visionary approach, right? I think all of us, all of us in the region, not just Palo Alto, we don't, we don't be interested in that, right? Second, I think Adrian brought up the California Voting Rights Act, which is, you know, in some ways, it's a little bit, I mean, it's, it's not the most crucial issue for everybody, but I think the concern is that the way the California law is written is it's, it's considerably broader than the federal law. And the concern is that, one of the consequences of the way it's written is so hard to defend that basically, cities don't defend it anymore, because a few have tried and lost. And so the concern is that, you know, I mean, I mean, there are people who've figured out you can make a, you know, a sustainable business going around and, and collecting fees on, right? And they're working their way down the list. And so it may be that the goal is to have district elections in every city, but there's a certain size of city in which it doesn't make sense, right? I mean, you can, you can, so I don't, I assume that was not the intent of the legislation.
I don't believe so.
But, but the view from here is it looks like maybe the way it's written is this is actually an unintended consequence, if anybody's looking at that.
I, we will look at that and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. And the last thing I would, I would say, it's back on the housing thing and so forth. I'm actually really pleased to see that there are, I mean, there's a relationship between job growth and housing pressure, right? And I'm actually, you know, really pleased to see sort of some of these efforts sprouting out to not just to legislate housing, but to actually fund it, right? And so Prop 1, of course, which you're seeing, Measure C in San Francisco, you know, the Mountain View, a Google tax measure and so forth. And so I think we're all going to find out if any of those pass tomorrow and so forth, and maybe that'll, maybe there'll be more thinking after that, depending on which way it goes.
Right. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Hill, I also wanted to thank you for your work. You know, particularly with NCPA and our own utility, I know you've stepped in on numerous occasions and really fixed things. You know, the obvious one was when we went to 50% renewables, you said and advocated for the whole notion that because our hydro would be more than 50% in particular year, we shouldn't then have to sell the hydro and buy, and buy renewables and cover that. And so, you know, going forward, there's a lot of issues like that, that, you know, I hope you'll continue to play that role, not just in utilities, but you mentioned school districts, for instance. It struck me that a lot of this is to say, okay, let's not break what's not broken. You know, in your district, for instance, you have a lot of great school districts, right? I mean, I realize there's some challenges as well, but there are some great school districts. And so figure out, how do you exempt the great school districts from some of that legislation, so that they're not impacted in a negative way? So that's really what I'd ask of you more, is that. And now, grade separations are a huge issue. But again, Palo Alto is always special. So one of the things I think we're looking at is closing some of our grade separations. And take, we would, what would be really helpful to Palo Alto is some ability to say, look, and, you know, take Churchill, for instance, you've probably driven Churchill, you know, doing a grade separation there, either somewhere those hybrid up or down, takes large numbers of homes. I, I forget the exact number, but just say 30 for, for discussion purposes. You know, that's really not acceptable to a community. So the question is, if you took, had some extra money to make other traffic improvements, you know, on Embarcadero and some of the other, on Alma and that, you could actually mitigate the closure, and it's probably cheaper than actually doing the grade separation. But the way this legislation usually comes down is, you have to use the money for the grade separation, or you don't get anything. So it's those kind of abilities to say, what is the better solution here and how we can do it? And I think a lot of that, and then I'd also make the plug that we get behind San Francisco and bring Caltrain to the Transbay Terminal. I, I think that would be huge, and I realize that's like another billion dollars. But in the scheme of things, I, I think that's probably the most useful thing we could do in terms of fixing our transportation system. Because where it currently goes is, you know, doesn't really work.
Doesn't, right.
I mean, it just doesn't. So that's really what I would ask of you. And then I think in a broader thing, with the rise of the C C Es, you know, the clean power, right? All of that, it's really unclear what P G and E's role is, other than as a transmission agency. And this transmission agency business where they make all their money, as you know, is causing us problems in that we're getting, most of these rate increases are basically transmission-based. P G and E wants to go out and build as much transmission cap, capability as they possibly could, whether or not it makes sense, because they get a return on their asset base. And so I, I know it's a heavy lift, but the question is, I think people in Sacramento should start thinking about, what does the future of this look like? And, you know, I know, for instance, at the last NCPA meeting we had, there was a lot of discussion about, here, P G and E goes again on their rate case, which is, you know, I don't know if you've looked at that, but it's, it's sort of absurd what they're asking for. And, you know, we're obviously going to fight it, and I'm sure you'll engage on that and, and all of that. And so those issues that, you know, aren't sexy issues anyway, make a huge difference to all of us. And so I, I think there's been a tax on the C C A recently on that kind of stuff.
Oh, there was a major one in the legislature, the, to allow for direct access. And I know San Mateo's C C A, their concern was Genentech is 5% of their, their energy. And they would, if they did use direct access, that would cut it off, and obviously, the power wouldn't be as clean as what they're getting from the C C A. So it, it was a, a real challenge, and it did pass to allow it, and we'll see, it's kind of a study at this point. But it is moving, but there are attacks on C C As. The good thing is the C C As are now coming together through the association, and they will have legislation this year. And, and you're, it's interesting, you raised the issue, I did meet with, actually, the C C As this afternoon. They are, and I heard that San Diego Gas and Electric is thinking of getting out of the retail business for, for power. They're looking at just providing the other, the distribution and, and the wires and the generations.
Interesting.
So that's, that may be something that we do see in the future, and that may be an answer to a lot of this. But then the challenge, if you get distributed access, or, yeah, direct access in some places and, and other things, we almost start getting back to free-for-all. And, and we may wind up with another energy crisis at the end of the day, with everybody buying, but then price, there's no stability in the market, and that's a, so I think it has to be planned better, but I-
I think what might actually be an interesting approach would be is if we basically decided to allow the C C Es to basically morph into every city having their own utility, basically, like Palo Alto and Santa Clara. You know, I, I know that's radical, but in many ways, that seems to be, if they're going to become a distribution company, that would provide stability.
Right.
And it seems wherever we have a local utility, rates are dramatically less than what P G and E have.
Yes, absolutely.
That's good, Lydia.
Absolutely.
Lydia, and then Greg.
Senator Hill, thank you so much for being here tonight, and thanks to staff for organizing this. I think, I appreciate very much what you said at the very beginning, in terms of, you know, there's these land use and zoning, top-down governance, where it may hurt communities because of its unique character, et cetera. And each community is a little bit different, and I think we, we should really work on keeping that, those kind of unique qualities of each neighborhood, each city. At the same time, yes, we do need housing, and I, I do believe that we haven't been at net zero in the last couple of years. We had about 118 units that are affordable that came into Palo Alto, and there's another one that is going to be coming in at the 120% AMI. So I think that's the focus, that if there is going to be any kind of sort of top-down governance, it should be kept at affordable housing, which is at the, which is subsidized, B M R, a below-market rate once. Simply because the housing that is being built, while, most of them are at the higher end, but with each new job that comes in for the high-end, which are usually high-end jobs, it ends up becoming, it actually brings in four to five additional low-income workers. And we need to support those low-income workers in order for them not to have to travel as far. So I hope that as you are at Sacramento, at our capital, that you remember that we, we do need to kind of consider that, the lower, lower income people that should not have to drive two, three hours. I think recently, on one of the news channels, they showed a lady who worked at the Fremont Education, Board of Education. Every morning, she starts up at four or five o'clock in the morning, takes a two-hour drive to her job, because she can't live close enough, and spends the day at work, goes home, does her home chores, go to sleep, and start the whole day over again on the road. So I think that we have to kind of think about that as well. Now, I think I also spoke to you previously in a meeting about transportation. Now, that's, I think, one of the main areas where it actually limits building and for cities to, to kind of consider that with open arms. What can Sacramento do in terms of consolidating some of these agencies, so that it's not, there isn't a duplication of effort, and the money is not being spent inefficiently? So every dollar is spent wisely?
Right, consolidation of agencies and the transportation or congestion management agencies, and, and I think-
Just the many transportation agencies that we have.
So many, I know.
Yeah, it's just that they're not even talking to each other.
When I became a city council member, was, it took a year or two to try to understand where all the funding comes from, who makes the decisions, and everyone has, and it is, it's a, it's not a, I don't think, a workable system. But I would really enjoy sitting down, and we could chat as to how best you would like to see that changed in, in this area, and we could use that as a model perhaps throughout the state. But I do want to be clear on the issue, and I said it earlier, that I, I do believe there will be continued efforts in Sacramento, and strong efforts in pushing, mandating housing in, in cities. If, and that, that won't, and a lot of that has to do with the term limit change of voters a few years ago. Members are there longer, so they have a, less of a, of a need to run for another position, so they're staying in one house longer for their whole term, so there's a less chance of them being, you know, thrown out of office or losing their position. So there's more stability in the legislature, which then allows for more, I believe, thoughtfulness, but they're, they're looking at and seeing that, that with the housing problem and crisis, that they need to take action. And so we'll, we'll just all have to watch this next session to see where that will come down and how it will apply. It is difficult when you take, you know, the, I hate to use that, overuse, the one-size-fits-all approach, but I don't know how other, how they can do it differently than that. So if there are ways to, to identify if cities are doing their part, and when I say their part is have an appropriate jobs-housing balance in terms of new jobs and creating the housing, as you probably have read, the city of Brisbane was a, an example of a city that was going in a direction that was not in that large area of the Baylands, having no housing in that particular area. And I kind of worked with them a little bit, and now they're, they're looking at 2,200. Well, it's on the ballot now, because the city agreed to move forward with housing, but we'll see tomorrow if that works. But I, I think we all have to do our part, and how that's defined is up to the city.
And I thank you for that, especially, you know, working with the city. It's something on two sides. At the same time, every time we are talking about housing, and I hope that Sacramento realizes that, when you're talking about housing and how many units, the fact, for example, Brisbane, they're getting 7 million square feet of office space or commercial space versus the 22 units, 2200 units of housing, right? So even at that, you know, it's, it's kind of not sufficient in order to house everybody. So I think the mention of the number of square feet for commercial space must go along with how much housing is coming on. You know, we talk housing, but we never talk on the other- You know, we talk housing, but we never talk on the other side, and they go hand-in-hand, linked, as well as transportation.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka, you've been very patient. Thank you.
So Senator Hill, thank you for coming out. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the work you do in Sacramento and for our state of California, so thank you. So I, I just, a lot of it has already been said, so I'm not going to rehash all of that. But definitely would love to get your support in trying to enable 401Ks, also for city employees, not just state employees. Several of my colleagues have mentioned that already, but I think that's a really crucial factor in making sure that city finances are, are stable. And, you know, right now, traffic is a very big concern for a lot of cities in this area. And I think a lot of this is solved best kind of regionally. And so, we'd love to get your support. I mean, people talked about Caltrain and grade separations. Of course, that's, that's, that would be great, having, you know, there's been a dream of a bar circling the bay, and, you know, still a dream. You know, I, I think in terms of Caltrain itself, I think, and I don't know if you could help on this, but it'd be, if you could weigh in somehow, that'd be great. So right now, the freight line still comes down on Caltrain. I'm not sure if it's still necessary at this point in time. Maybe at one point in time it was, but I think times have changed. I, I think that's something that would free up more options for us, if we could, if we could.
Isn't the great, what was the thing, Greg?
Freight.
Freight, yes.
Yeah. Right now, the freight line goes down on Caltrain, and that limits the grade separation options, or makes it hard, maybe more expensive perhaps. And perhaps that's not as necessary as it used to be. Or maybe that should be electrified. There's a lot of other options that are possible. And I, I think the other thing to think about is, and I've, I've been reading a lot about this lately, is the idea of like autonomous buses. So perhaps autonomous buses might be able to replace some of the fixed rail transit that, that typically have solved a lot of the mass transit problems. Anyways, just would love to get your support and try to help.
Yeah, no, that's great. It's another way of looking at it.
And, yeah, love to get your support on the 401Ks as well.
Very good. Thank you very much for that.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for being here, Senator Hill. We do have two people in the audience who would like to either ask you a question or make a comment. And Penny Elson, and then Phil Burton. There was another Phil Burton, so I was. Greetings.
Greetings. I'm Penny Elson, speaking as an individual. Welcome, Senator Hill. Thank you for being here. The Caltrain corridor serves, services some of the world's most innovative and fastest-growing companies. Congestion is the third biggest business challenge in Silicon Valley, not to mention a challenge every day for each and every one of us. It wastes our time, it pollutes our environment, and degrades our quality of life. Caltrain electrification has potential to take thousands of daily peak-hour trips off the road, moving them more efficiently. But this solution only works if grade separation occurs along the corridor, including in Palo Alto, where critical east-west bus transit and auto routes cross the rail corridor to provide connections from 101, 280, and local jobs. Grades, so we need state dollars to help. We've heard this from council, but I want to reiterate, I'm here today to say, we need help, help funding the remaining 41 grade separations that are needed for Caltrain electrification, to run a schedule that'll meet demand and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This makes it a state issue. Greenhouse gas emissions is a big deal, and I think that that transportation funding should not be tied to the size of a city, but to transportation activity levels. VTA delivered a map as part of their bus transit planning process a year ago, and in that, that map showed sort of the heat levels of transportation activity across our county. Palo Alto was as hot as downtown San Jose. We need to be looking at that. We need help lobbying for a CPUC waiver for height clearances, reducing them from two and a half feet to 19 feet. These small clearance changes have potential to significantly reduce the cost of grade separation and related congestion relief. You could help with that, I hope. A CPUC waiver could also help us push for level boarding, which would reduce dwell time and lead to better schedule adherence, so more trains can run. We need political pressure to encourage Caltrain to change its requirement from 1% grade to 2% grade. A 2014 study for a trench at Charleston and East Meadow crossings was cost out at $1 billion, I'm sure it's more than that now, that's with a B, billion, for 1% grade and $480 million for 2%. That's a big difference in cost. It would help us very much to figure out what's feasible for our community, if we could get this information from Caltrain and the, and the other agencies that control the corridor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if you could just talk to Lisa, and yet, we'd love to get some more details of exactly, I know you've done a lot of research in that, so it'd be great to, so I can specifically, I didn't take adequate notes, so that we can follow up adequately with you.
I would just suggest to the city manager, can we share our recent letter to Caltrain with Senator Hill's office? Thank you.
And our second person is not the original Phil Burton, but the, the current Phil Burton.
I would like to add that when he was first elected in 1964, I cut out a newspaper article.
You need the mic right here.
I'd like to add that when the, when the first Phil Burton was elected to political office in 1964, I cut out his picture from the New York Times, and I still have it somewhere. I'm pleased that a national forest is named after him or me. I'm, I'm Phil Burton. In the interest of full disclosure, I am on the Citizens Advisory Panel for this Palo Alto grade crossing separation project, and I want to speak about that project to kind of reinforce some points that have already been made. I'm pleased to be here, because I've spoken before. The two issues that have tremendous impact on both the construction cost and the time of construction are the height clearance above rail for wires, and the maximum grade, sometimes called the ruling grade in railroad terms. And the differences here amount to hundreds of millions of dollars, just for Palo Alto alone. So imagine the impact if we did this up and down the peninsula. So, the 19 and a half proposed clearance is a variance only because the California Public Utilities Commission mandates a 24-foot clearance, which was set by the Association of American Railroads, so-called Plate H, if you care to get down to the technical details. Okay? Plate H, Association of American Railroads, AAR. Lowering that to 19 and a half percent would have no practical impact on Union Pacific Railroad, which operates freight trains, because of other height restrictions along the right-of-way. But somebody has to go after the PUC to tell them to approve this variance. The second issue is grade, maximum grade. And here, this is an issue. It's an issue because the Union Pacific Railroad has a baggage rights agreement, and Caltrain follows that agreement, of course, which limits grades to 1%. Caltrain would not have any issue with a 2% grade, because self-propelled electric multiple-unit trains routinely climb more than the 2% grades. I can point to you in New York, where subway trains climb well above 2% when they go out of the East River tunnels, for example, if you care to get down to those details. However, Caltrain is not going to initiate this negotiation with UP on its own. It needs pressure from elected officials to motivate Caltrain to engage with Union Pacific Railroad. Now, I'm not trying to demonize UP, but they have absolutely no incentive to agree to the change. It will probably take some money on the table, there has to be a creative solution, but the process has to get started. The sooner the better. And by the way, the, the letter that you're being given deals with these issues. So I'm trying to give you some additional background. Thank you for the time.
Deal with the Union Pacific issue. Thank you. No, I know, and I'll demonize them.
Thank you both so much for, for speaking. I'm going to ask Senator Hill if he would like to go forward with a special award he has.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And it's, I don't know if it's, it's, it is special, but I did want to recognize and thank you for the opportunity, because as I mentioned, your utility is so unique, so special in this state, that it has been providing for so many years such outstanding service to the community. And it was just recognized in the Diamond Level RP3 Award. And it's, it's kind of a unique elite group of three California utilities honored by this prestigious award in 2018, only three. But to put that more into context, there are 2,000 national municipal utilities that would be eligible, and out of the whole country, 118 received this award. And the RP3 program stands for, and I know we were all wondering, that reliable public power. And, and we certainly want our power to be reliable. And certainly, your power, Palo Alto Utility, has been doing that. But it represents something much better than just pretty good power, having power. It, it highlights utilities that meet and exceed industry best practices. And as I was talking earlier, some of our utilities don't practice best practices. And this includes reliably serving its customers, creating a culture of safety, training staff, and providing them upward mobility, and promoting system integrity and good stewardship. These are the key features I've been pressing our state's larger utilities to adopt. And chief among the diamond level criteria, which I think is so critical and so important, that it's meaningful to me, is that it's meeting the safety criteria, criteria for RP3. The safety criteria not only includes workplace safety for employees, but also creating a safety culture, something that our large investor-owned utilities have not been willing to do and follow. It's that safety culture that's so critical. It's a universal acknowledgement that safety matters in all aspects. And so that's what we've really seen with Palo Alto Utility, is that, that ability to be safe. And it's, it's hard to recognize, hard to achieve, but it's immediately recognizable when it's lacking. So it's a part of the job in Palo Alto's leadership in prioritizing safety and really ensuring the primacy of, of safety infuses the rest of the workforce is critical, and I think so important. And Palo Alto deserves so much credit, credit for this. And it's the utility we know is, is very special, not just because of the award, but for the, the, the rates that they charge, the safety that they've had. But we know it starts at the top, and this is the top. And the leadership that this city has provided, their utility is extraordinary. So thank you for that. And I just wanted to present a little certificate that we have, and I'd like to do that if I could.
We have our utilities director here, but I think Ed would at least like to join the mayor in accepting the.
Oh, wonderful. It is, it's very unique that this would happen, but not unique when you look at Palo Alto for doing it.
We know that there are other places in the country that are talking about coal, but we're happy to be recognized for diamonds, of course, the end result of leaving coal behind.
Thank you for letting me do that, and it was really special to have that opportunity, because I, I use Palo Alto as the shining star whenever I talk about how it can be done, how utilities should and can be operated, and do it in a way that provides the greatest service at the best rate possible. So, thank you.
Well, and you probably know Ed has been heading that up for two and a half years now, or longer. And he is going to be our new city manager, as you probably know.
I did know that, yes.
Right, so congratulations to him on all those counts, because that's a pretty special award. Just keep the electricity coming.
And the rates low.
And the rates low, exactly. So with that, I want to just thank Senator Hill for being here, for taking a good hour and a half with us tonight, makes a big difference. And I hope you and Lisa will stay in touch with us regarding what's happening, what bills are there, where you'd like us to weigh in, when you would like us to weigh in.
Absolutely.
We're always willing to zip to Sacramento and testify when necessary, so let us know.
And you all have my cell phone numbers, I know, so please call anytime or text, that works best.
I do have your cell phone. Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that, we are going to go into a closed session, if I get a motion to do so.
Second.
Good, the motion at a second. If you'd vote on the board. Already voted, just like that. Okay, so we'll head into closed session, and thank you again to Jerry for being here, for doing the excellent work you have done for how many years now?
Too many.
You did city council, didn't you?
City council, yeah, 28, 26 years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. City council.
County supervisor.
Our board of supervisors, yeah. And, and then up to Sacramento.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like that.
No.
Greetings, everyone. Apologies for being ever so slightly late, but we are back to our regular agenda, and we have finished our closed session. There is nothing to report. And that takes us to agenda, changes, additions, deletions. I have not heard of any.
Madam Mayor, if I might.
Sir?
It's not technically what you report under this, but I just did want to just announce that item number four in the closed session conference with labor negotiators, we were not able to get to that this evening, and we will be rescheduling that for an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, I believe Beth has already been scheduled for the coming week. Okay, and not the coming week, the coming, in two weeks, that will.
November 19th.
Right, thanks.
Thank you.
So, thank you, city manager, and now it's your, your show.
Thank you, council members and Madam Mayor. I want to start off with just announcing that the Mobility On Demand Fair Value Commuting Federal Grant, which we've been working on for quite some time, officially kicked off today with a meeting between our city as the lead city, some of our neighboring cities, and some private sector folks. As you may recall, the Federal Transit Administration and the Department of Transportation have been involved in this project, and it is part of a $1 million grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation that we have received, that is focused on reducing the rate of solo driving. So we'll be working on a regional basis on the project, which focuses on smart technology and mobile apps integrated with enhanced and coordinated public transit services as ways to encourage mobility choices other than driving alone. So we look forward to keeping the council updated on this project as it progresses, but it is now officially underway. Secondly, I'm happy to share that there will be a ribbon cutting for the opening of the 7.7-acre area of Foothills Park on Saturday, November 10th, from 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Not to single out just some former council members, but if any of you see Councilmember Greg Schmidt, please let him know. I know that that was in interest of his, along with many of the other council members. As you recall, the property was a gift to the city of Palo Alto from the Lee family, dating all the way back to 1981. After the ribbon cutting on November 10th, by the Parks and Rec Commission Chair Don McDougall, there will be a brief talk from Grassroots Ecology about their native plant nursery and a ranger-led tour of the site. Parking is available at the parking lot next to the Oak Grove picnic area. So again, that is November Saturday, this next Saturday, November 10th, from 11:30 to 12:30 p.m. Transportation staff will hold an El Camino Real redesign open house this Thursday, November 8th, at the College Terrace Library from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. as part of the outreach efforts for the Grand Boulevard concept in the Palo Alto section. As you know, this has been an ongoing and larger collaboration of 19 cities, a couple counties, local and regional agencies working on ways to improve the city. counties, local and regional agencies, working on ways to improve the safety and aesthetics of El Camino Real. As council, and I'm sure many of our community aware, given the press announcement on this, Waymo's application to test driverless vehicles in a few of the neighboring cities, including Palo Alto, was approved last week by the Department of Motor Vehicles. The timeline has yet to be firmly established as to when we might actually see vehicles in Palo Alto under the new conditions and the permit. But Waymo is holding a public forum on Tuesday, November 27th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Coverley Community Center in Room H1, for folks who are interested in updates on that. As you know, they've been developing the technology since 2009, and Waymo's local policy and technical teams will discuss its new test program plus share insights on what's next for Waymo. And we'll have a question-and-answer sessions plus a chance to view a Waymo vehicle up And then this afternoon, we had a celebration of Veterans Day, an advanced celebration of Veterans Day, outside on the plaza earlier this afternoon. And we want to thank the Community Services Department and Mayor Niss for putting together the event and her role in emceeing it. It was a nice tribute outside City Hall on a beautiful November day, and was a nice way to honor and acknowledge the service of veterans, including a number of employees and community members who attended. Our keynote speaker was retired U.S. Colonel William Snow, who is Chair of the Department of Counseling at Palo Alto University. And then, I think we have some slides, David. During the ceremony, artists from the Coverley Art Collaborative presented a three-book series to the city that they had created called "Thank You for Your Service." The books are each covered in Army uniform fabric and feature various comic strip artistic contributions by the community in honor of veterans. You can see a few of the many pages up on the screen right now, and a copy of the book will be placed at the downtown Palo Alto Library for viewing, and an ebook version will be available free to the public soon. And then lastly, an update on the path to the bike bridge. We're continuing to reach important right-of-way milestones on our path to the bike bridge for the 101 pedestrian bike overpass project at Adobe Creek. On the consent calendar tonight for the council is approval of the joint use agreement between the city and the Santa Clara Valley Water District for the new pathway along Adobe Creek. And then just earlier today, Google and the city reached agreement on nearly all the terms for the easement that allows the Western Bridge Approach ramp to be located on Google's West Bay Shore Road property. This week, our staff is working to finalize the agreement between Caltrans and the city for the maintenance of the new bridge. I just share these because these documents are part of the Caltrans right-of-way certification process, and once we complete that, we will be able to bid out the project as soon as the agreements and construction agreements are accepted, or documents, excuse me, are accepted by Caltrans. So stay tuned. We hope to continue to update the council again before the year is out. And that's all I have to report.
Just a further comment on this afternoon and the Veterans Day celebration. The Colonel, who gave a very good speech, offered to send it to us and we'll put it on our website.
Great.
It was very interesting, and he had a fabulous story. So I hope some of you will go and take a look at it on the website.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Just if the mayor would allow, just a brief historical comment having to do with Foothills Park and pertinent to what we were talking about earlier. One of the better stories from my perspective in Palo Alto history is when Dr. Russell Lee was considering selling the land that became Foothills Park for development. His wife, Dorothy, said, "No, I own," she said, "No, I own half of that property." And he said, "Which half?" And she said, "Every other square foot." So that kind of precluded the sale of the property.
Okay, so with that, we go on to oral communications, and we have two for oral communications thus far. Winter Dolanbach and Jonathan Erman.
So I wanted to continue the subject from last week I spoke to and--
You'll be having three minutes.
You've missed out on the conversation. Well, some of us had a conversation Sunday, three different council people. It was really fun. Thank you for bringing this up yesterday with me about how long speakers could speak. And you all said exactly the same thing, well, almost exactly, that there had been one time and only one. I think we were looking, that we were confined to one-minute speakers. I think we were looking possibly at a different, a little bit different canvas, because I have come up with more than that than a single time. But I won't go through, I mentioned it to you all, the ones that spoke to me, but I'm not going to go through my list because I don't have enough time. But there have been multiple times when we were confined to one minute. But I did want to say this. You know, the thing about it is, is that it's not just one minute to speak, it's one minute to listen. And you can't listen too much in one minute as well as you can't speak too much in one minute. And it's a two-way process to get information, to consider information, to be informed by information. I think, you know, every now and then, I hear you folks actually respond to something that Herb Borach says. And you actually sometimes incorporate what he says, and I hear sometimes the city manager refer to something that he says. So I know that sometimes you take value from what some of us say. Also, I want you to remember that you are going from nine to seven. And the main justification for doing that all through the campaign, to go down to seven, although even some of us didn't necessarily agree about this justification, was that you would have more time, and you wouldn't have to have meetings going so late, you would have more time. So there are many reasons why your meetings go late or that you are late, you take the time for the things that you do. You were 45 minutes late today. That's not a criticism of me before you started this part of the meeting, but that shouldn't be taken out on just speakers, and speakers shouldn't be just blamed for that. There are many reasons. I don't know why you were 45 minutes late. I'm sure that there was a good reason for that before you started this part of the meeting. But you will have more time, supposedly, in theory, now that there's seven and not nine of you. At least that was what you represented to voters for going down to seven members. So just keep all of that in mind, and don't, let's not think of reasons to suppress our ability to petition our government, a fundamental right in our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan Erman. And just a reminder, during oral communications, we don't communicate back and forth with the audience. Sir?
Hi. I wanted to talk about public transit today, I guess specifically about Caltrain. I've been reading in the paper that you're talking, considering grade separation and various options for this and that. And I guess partly what confuses me is it seems like, from what Caltrain is saying, is that grade separation is not necessarily a requirement for running the electrified trains. And it seems, and the justification they keep saying is, well, we have to do it because the guardrails are going to be down so much more often, the traffic is just going to be impossible, and so that's why you have to have grade separation. And I guess I just, I worry because the public transit agencies have a tendency to be, let's face it, chifty. When they decide what option that they want to be pursued, they will come up with, you know, whatever narrative is necessary to justify that. And I just wonder if you're really considering all the options. I mean, I can see safety being touted as like a major reason for grade separation, but saying, well, traffic is going to be so bad because we're going to be running so many more trains. I just don't think that's, I don't think that's true. I mean, the main thing they're talking about is running one extra train during rush hour, which is already pretty busy, and I don't see how that will radically affect traffic patterns. I mean, the fact is, during the day, Caltrain used to run trains every half an hour during the regular days, and they stopped a number of years ago and only runs once every hour. And I doubt there are any major traffic, and, you know, if they bring that back, that wouldn't cause major traffic changes. And I also, I just, you know, something like that, though, something like that could be tested, right? I mean, you could, all this will be like this, it'll be like that. You could run a simulation, right? You could run, you could bring the guardrails down as if extra trains were passing and see what it does to traffic, and then you would know. I also, if you are doing grade separations, I do hope that you will certainly include, there should always be pedestrian bike crossings, you know, in any of those spots you're thinking of closing. The fact is, a number of years ago, there was a study, I believe that was presented to the council, that said there should be more access, you know, through the, under the train tracks, you know, like there's a crossing next to the medical center down from the Caltrain. And it said, you know, but between, say, the California Avenue and the Meadow Crossing, that there should be more opportunities for pedestrians and bikes to go through, and that would be very beneficial for the city. But of course, that was kind of buried, I think, partly because dealing with the train tracks is such a difficult issue for the city because of all the different things going on. And also, you know, it seems like Caltrain gets to have the most expensive version of what they want, but the cities are told they have to pay for these things themselves. And when they say the ideal version is such and such, it's too expensive for the city. I don't understand why. If Caltrain says you have to have grade separation, then why aren't they paying for it?
That was a good end to that comment. So this now takes us to, hang on, to the consent calendar, which tonight is items five through 15. Any comments on this? And if not, if I could have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, would you vote on the board?
Oh, actually--
Sorry.
No on number six.
A no on six? Okay. Any other noes? Eve, with the approval of the consent calendar, we move to our one--
We--
Oh, did some, well, I know that, no, I think it's, yeah, thank you. So that passed unanimously with a no vote by Councilmember Tanaka on number six. So now, the main attraction is our public hearing, which is on 250 Sherman Avenue, the Public Safety Building. And I want to point out that it is 8:45, and that's 8:45. Could he speak to his no? I'm sorry. He voted no. Hey, I apologize, Councilmember Tanaka. I was so excited that we were almost on time. Yes, please.
Okay, so on item six, so this is a $10 million authorization to purchase basically carbon offsets. And in principle, it sounds like a good idea, and generally, I support it. But the biggest issue I have is that, okay, so the company that we're doing this with is Amsterdam Commodities Trading. It's a Netherlands company. It's a lot of money. It's something which I prefer to see it actually have gone to an American company versus a European company. Now, we had in 2018, 1.5 million acres that burned. We just acknowledged firefighters who went to help put out some fires in California, but 1.5 million acres of forest that burned in California. And the money is going everywhere but California, right? It's going to eastern United States, it's going to foreign countries, it's going to Wisconsin, it's going to every place but California. But worse, and the part that I really have an issue with is that it has a cap of 10 cents per therm. Now, the average cost of a therm in North America is actually 1.5 cents per therm. So we are paying almost 10x, maybe not 10x, maybe 7x what the cap is, I mean, what the average is in North America. So I'm not sure why we're paying so much more, but it's, it doesn't seem like it was bidded out. This is the only bid I saw for the contract. And the average price in the contract is 4 cents per therm. And this is, this is still dramatically higher than what the average is in North America. If we were to spend this money in California, the average amount of cost per therm in California is 5 cents. And to me, it makes no sense that we are hiring a foreign company to do carbon offsets while we could certainly use an American company, and we could have done the carbon offsets here in California, which the people of the state would have really appreciated, given all the wildfires that we've had. So I find that it's really tragic that we are spending so much money, not in our own state, not trying to help our nearby neighbors with all the wildfires we have in California. Plus, we're spending it at a considerably higher rate than it would have cost from some other outfit.
Okay, thank you. And now, it is on with the show, so welcome, everybody, tonight. City manager, are you going to introduce this topic with a history as well?
Well, Madam Mayor, it doesn't seem like we were, it was that long ago we were here with this group, what, six, eight weeks ago, something like that at most? If I recall correctly, we were, it was a Monday night, and following that Thursday, that week, there was going to be an ARB meeting, and we were expecting to get the results of that. So I think we're back post-ARB with what should very well be final recommendations. I'm guessing we may have an ARB representative here this evening. Is Peter here? Okay? Yep, okay. So I think our team is ready to take this forward, and, you know, then I'll leave it to Brad and the team to give you their specific recommendations as to what they're asking you to do, so we can, in this case, kick this can down the road. And I mean that in a positive way. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Amy French, Chief Planning Official, pleased tonight to be here. We have on the screen here a brief history of the Public Safety Building, beginning with the 1970 opening of the current police building, right next door here, until council's adoption in June of the EIR and public facility zone changes that enabled approval of the public parking garage on that very same night in June. This image shows an overview of the Public Safety Building project site fronting Sherman Avenue and divided by Birch Street. The Public Safety Building site is across from the county courthouse site. Now, this image shows an estimated construction timeline, with the parking garage being constructed beginning early 2019, and then the construction of the Public Safety Building is anticipated in the fall of 2020. Tonight, council is requested to approve the architectural review application for the Public Safety Building itself. This image shows an estimated construction, sorry. This image is, with many large projects, the Public Safety Building began with preliminary architectural review. In this case, we held study sessions with the HRB and ARB last summer. This allowed the public to see and make comments on early project concepts for the buildings.
Which is what you see there.
Yes, so this, then shortly thereafter, the formal, this is the preliminary design you see on the screen, showing that there were some issues and concerns reflected. This allowed the formal application to come in with finer designs. The formal application was presented to the ARB in October 2017. The ARB at that time expressed greater enthusiasm for the garage than for the Public Safety Building. So this led to the next submittal. Because of the sequencing of the construction, the architect began to design the garage in early 2018. The ARB saw the garage, and that came to the council for approval in June. The Public Safety Building project, EIR, zone change and garage, were certified, adopted, and approved. And this allowed for this next stage in July, when the ARB reviewed the plans for the Public Safety Building. And they were much more enthusiastically received with all the changes. Then the ARB at last saw changes of materials in October, and we got the ARB's approval to bring to you tonight. We do have Board Member Baltay in the audience from the ARB to provide a perspective after the presentation by our architect and answer any questions the council members may have. the presentation by our architect and answer any questions the council members may have. This is an image of the tree canopy. The existing parking lot had a lot of existing trees, so replacement trees were required. And so we're going to reflect the no net loss of tree canopy to meet the city's policies and the EIR measures. Now, public work staff is next up. They worked on this project schedule, and they can introduce the architect.
Good evening, council members. Brad Eggleston, interim director of Public Works. Before we transitioned to the architect's presentation, I wanted to pause here on the schedule for a moment, just to show you the big picture of where we kind of sit right now as we talk about these two projects. So when we were last here talking about this on September 17th, we were actually out to bid on the Calav Garage project, and as the city manager, Jim Keane, said, about to go back to ARB later that week for the Public Safety Building. So since then, we've received bids on the Calav Garage, and we're currently evaluating those to select the lowest responsive bidder. We're on your tentative agenda for the December 3 meeting to hopefully have the award of a construction contract for the garage. And then you can see in this chart that we're anticipating to begin construction in January and essentially go halfway through 2020 on the garage construction. With the approval of the Public Safety Building design this evening, we'll continue to forge ahead with the remaining design steps that take us through design development and through the various stages of construction documents development, so that we can get to permitting and bidding in early 2020. And then, as you see on this chart, our goal is to essentially begin construction on the Public Safety Building as soon as we completed the parking garage. And with that, I will turn it over to Michael Ross of Ross Jewell's Cusenberry Architecture.
Good evening. Thank you again for this opportunity to present this project. Since we last met, the design team has been working collaboratively with the Palo Alto Police Department, the Fire Department, OES, Planning Department, Department of Public Works, and importantly, with the ARB to, first of all, discuss and explore design opportunities for this project. But tonight, we're actually talking about the refinement of the design. And with your permission, I'd like to present a brief overview of the project. It will not take more than five minutes. After that, I'll be available for, to respond to your comments or questions. Well, what you see before you is, and you'll remember that the Public Safety Building is part of an ensemble of three elements being located in what is now the evolving California Avenue District. It's going to be located on two city-owned lots. The three primary elements include the new 636 space California Avenue parking garage, which is depicted in the lower left-hand side of this image, and you can see the PV panels, the photovoltaic panels on the roof of that. In the center of the image is the new Public Safety Building itself. It's a three-story, 48,000-square-foot structure that sits on top of two basement levels of secure parking. And the third element is an accessory site building, which is parallel to Park. While the Public Safety Building is a very specialized building, it has been designed to be open, approachable, human-scaled, and civic. And the building design balances openness with security, utilizing a three-part layering of materials. You can see in this image, and there's other images, which I will show you, that depict the, sort of, the stacking of materials. But basically, the organization follows this. The base forms a full-perimeter, continuous pedestrian and landscaped realm frame, if you will, which was originally proposed to you at the last meeting to be board-formed concrete, and following dialogue with ARB, has been changed to a rusticated artisan full-brick veneer. And that's the band that incorporates virtually all the landscaping, the seat walls, the vehicle barriers, the planters and things like that, that the, the Public Safety Building basically sits into, okay? Above the second story is a warm-toned tile-clad precast wall system, which references the building heights along California Avenue. And that brings you up to the sill height of the third story that you can see here. And the third floor has been designed to be more transparent and lighter. And it is composed of a glass and tile facade system with interior louvers for light and glare control. And this element, we believe, will reflect the sky, and we took this approach to reduce the perceived mass of the building from the pedestrian level. And this overall stacking of the building is emblematic of the pedestrian realm, the operational realm, and the, the mission of the police department, the administrative functions on the third floor. A landscape forecourt leads to a corner entry, which is located on the corner of Sherman and Birch. And here you see the, the brick base layer, which all of the images that you see this evening indicate the brick that is being proposed, which is actually an artisan-level, heavily rusticated base, which is more familiar with the landscaping and nature at the sidewalk level, which we believe forms the appropriate interaction with active street life, and really creates a wonderful sort of framework and holder for the landscape plan. This is the seat wall in front of the multipurpose room, the single-story multipurpose room fronts Birch Street. And with the California Avenue Garage across the street, it widens the pedestrian realm. There's a row of street trees down the middle in a divider. There is a public lobby at the entry to the California Avenue Garage. And then here, in front of the Public Safety Building, there is an activated streetscape that allows for the passive social gatherings, people coming and going to Calav Garage, as well as for people waiting to enter the Public Safety Building should they have business This image is from Birch Street, looking at the entry, and you can see that there is a variety of scale and massing in materials and ability for the pedestrians to engage the building in an interesting and varied way. Input from the ARB has been very instructive in allowing us to design a building which allows for a much more active, integrated pedestrian experience at Birch Street and all around the building. This is a view down Sherman, from the corner of Park and Sherman. And the walls that you see where it says "Public Safety," those are visual screening walls of the operational parking lot beyond in the accessory buildings that are necessary to support the mission. Park Boulevard has always been a bicycle-friendly street, a bicycle-intensive street, and our approach to the landscaping along Park has been to bring the bicycle closer to the building. There's bike racks, there's a bike repair station, there's areas to stage your bikes if you want to park there and go to Calav for lunch and things like that. And so what we've tried to do is, where this primary bike route is located, have a bike emphasis in the landscape design. And street trees. Street trees frame three sides of the building. On Jacaranda, it's a little too narrow for that, but on all sides of the building along Birch, Sherman, and Park Boulevard, there are a very intensive canopy street tree program being introduced. This is a view of the elevation along Sherman, from across the street by the courthouse. The, the landscape works in tandem with the architecture to create this green realm which frames the building. The landscaping is going to emphasize, like I said before, the canopy trees, native planting, drought-resistant plants, as well as plant materials of varied textures, leaf shapes, and colors. And we're very pleased that we've been able to really locate this very specialized and, at times, complex, programmatically complex building into this wonderful landscape area. This is a view of the main entry from the corner of Birch and Sherman. And you can see the upper level, the glassiness, the reflective nature of it, and, and beyond, you can see the communications tower that we spoke about last time. It's approximately 135 feet tall and will look approximately like it's depicted here. So that concludes my presentation. Chief, Deputy Chief of Police, Patty Lum, is going to describe aspects of the multipurpose room.
Good evening, council members. Patty Lum from the Police Department. Thank you again for the opportunity to present tonight. We wanted to take just a moment to pause on a couple of questions that came up at ARB and referred to Subcommittee for your information. We have to apologize that we were not able to be present at the last ARB meeting. The Police Department management team hadn't had an offsite in years, and we actually had planned for that exact week. So had we been there, we thought we could have provided more information, so we do apologize for that. We felt the ARB process was extremely valuable in that we've seen the building develop and the site become just a better place to place this PSB. So when we talk about one of the questions, one is the multipurpose room. And the question came up at ARB, is this a community room? Can this be a community room? Where, what is the purpose of this room? So the PSB has, along history, which you all know, but specifically, Public Safety is asking you tonight to leave the multipurpose room as is and not make it a community room. The multipurpose room, or MPR, is a part of the 45,000 or so square feet of programmed space. It is not an extra space to redesignate at this late time without losing building functionality. It is a key aspect of an already constrained site, and it makes the building work. There's a specific need for this space which directly relates to state and city mandated training, job hiring, press interactions, regional training, and community meetings. The MPR is the largest shared meeting space in the PSB. Any other room can only house about 15 people, and it's something that's drastically missing from our current location. As the PSB schematic design developed on Sherman, the MPR itself was pulled out onto the plaza to make the building more attractive, and it became more visible. This begged the question of its use. As a result, the ARB has posed a couple of questions, which are legitimate and need an answer. So the first is, can the MPR be a community room? Our staff response from Public Safety is we prefer that it not. We have a significant concern that it would limit the operational ability of this space and this building. Public Safety hosts a number of events per year. The Police Department's projected about 156 events themselves in this room, and OES has projected about 200 events. That's about 356 bookings or more per year in this room. So what's in this room? Citizens Academy classes, chief's advisory group meetings, parent project meetings, regional training events, regional meetings, officer or firefighter-on-the-job training, computer training, press conferences, community outreach, OES activations as a breakout room, OES training and meetings, and remember that Director Duker has over 1,000 emergency services volunteers, and they all need updated training. So the second question we come to is, can the MPR be designed in a more open concept with additional windows or doors? Our response would be that the MPR is a part of the secure PSB envelope with varied uses. It's our responsibility to protect the occupants, whomever they are. We considered the threat analysis during the planning stages for schematic design. Making the MPR more open without additional security measures would be going against those recommendations and add cost. The MPR is a part of the PSB, it must have the same level of hardening and protectability. Adding more glass or a public entrance from the outside means adding significant cost. The glass would have to be ballistic grade, adding an additional significant cost. An extra entrance on the outside would go against the threat assessment. Ideally, the public enters and exits the PSB through one main site at the lobby. There was one final small question about adding public restrooms to the multipurpose room. We feel this would be redundant and costly, as there are public restrooms right next door in the lobby. So finally, just a couple of constraints if we made this a community room. As you know, the Department of Justice establishes regulations for entry and exit into police facilities. Public safety information, including building key card systems, have to be maintained on a separate network, therefore not regulated by the city in general. Regulating community access to the room may require significant staff time, such as who would monitor IT, audiovisual, access controls, and so on. Limiting public access would require staff to travel offsite to other locations and take those opportunities, such as Mitchell Park, away from the community and other staff. And finally, the Subcommittee will be addressing the communications tower, and specifically, what the arrangements of attachments will look like on the communications tower. And we've presented a couple of examples from our neighbors, and we're very mindful that this is a very sensitive topic, and trying to balance that with the need for this communications tower. And during questions, if you need any further additional information, Director Cullen is
Who is next? Thank you for coming, Peter.
So this is vice chair of the ARB, Peter Balte.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Peter Balte, and I am the vice chair of the Architectural Review Board. I've been asked by our chair to present our findings regarding the proposed Public Safety Building, which is before you this evening. The board has earned our, the project has earned our unanimous endorsement, and we urge you to accept our recommendation of approval. Over the past 16 months, the ARB has held five public hearings, listened to the testimony of dozens of concerned citizens, and offered literally hundreds of suggestions for improvements. We are pleased to say that the architects, city staff, and Police Department have been receptive partners in the process. At every step, the building has been substantially improved. What you see, what you see before you this evening represents a thoughtful balancing of the 21st century requirements of a modern police facility with the need to integrate into the urban fabric of a vibrant commercial area. The building must be secure, yet it must fully embrace the community expectations that it be open and civic by nature. It needs to be spacious enough to accommodate our needs for decades to come, yet not appear so bulky as to overwhelm its neighbors and community. It must be robustly constructed to endure for decades, using high-quality materials that are of our time, which represent the best of Palo Alto architecture. It must also be economical and practical, so as to offer a wise expenditure of public resources. We found this project to meet all of these requirements, as well as all of the findings required by our codes. The public plaza and entrance on the corner of Sherman and Birch Streets, which is on the screen above you, is worthy of your attention, as it is the primary linkage of the building and of the Police Department within to the community. The broad two-story opening, slightly elevated, yet easily accessible, is sheltered by a sweeping and contemporary soffit and surrounded by ample landscaping, benches, and public areas. The revised brick finish offers a durable and tactile quality that reflects back on our past while integrating well with the other more contemporary elements of the structure. It is a powerful civic entrance to a building that will be a lasting legacy. The ARB has struggled with the proposed meeting room on the corner of Jacaranda Lane and Birch Street. We have consistently felt that this should be an open and community-oriented space with ample public visibility. While this could be easily accomplished by enlarging and lowering the windows facing the plaza, the lack of privacy and security would make the room less useful for internal Police Department functions. Even though there is a primary meeting room offering greater privacy and security within the building, the ARB... within the building, the ARB felt that this single issue should not delay the project. Rather, we acknowledge that this question is primarily one of deciding the intended purpose of the community meeting room and respectfully defer to the wisdom of our City Council. Regardless of your decision regarding the community room, the Architecture Review Board has unanimously recommended approval of the proposed public safety building. We are confident that the new building will provide a most welcome home to our long-waiting Police Department while also becoming an enduring example of civic-minded architecture. This is a building that we will proudly leave to future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Are there any questions for the ARB while Peter is here? Thank you for coming. Okay. Any more from staff tonight? Any other comments? Okay, so two of the issues that I think will probably come up are the multipurpose room, and the other one I would guess would be the communications tower. I want to mention, I particularly like the brickwork that you're going to have on the, on the ground floor. That was, that's very attractive. Councilmember Holman. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there some public speakers? Okay, good. Yes, thank you. Bob Moss. Greetings.
Thank you, Mayor Niss and Councilmembers. This site is in an area generally called COE, California Olive Emerson, which is part of the toxic site, which the Regional Water Quality Control Board has been overseeing for decades. This particular location is not in an area which is contaminated, at least it hasn't, wasn't some years ago. But you do have to take precautions. Now, the staff report indicates there are some things about the site that are not clear to them. On Packet Page 638, Staff Report 16, Item 4 talks about basement drainage and having to, because of the high level of groundwater, you have to have pumps and discharge. And at the bottom, it says, "The Public Works recommends a waterproofing consultant to design and inspect the vapor barrier and waterproofing." The aquifer at this site is 12 feet. It goes up and down a little bit depending on how much rainfall we have. But a two-level basement is definitely going to penetrate the aquifer. Here's a picture of it. So it will be necessary to have the basement sealed and to have water extraction to keep the water from entering the building. And also, it's going to be important to have vapor barriers. The next question that they had on the next page says there may be plume monitoring wells on the project site. And you have to ask the Regional Water Quality Control Board if there are any and where there are. Yes, there are plume monitoring wells on the site. There are two of them approximately at Park and Sherman. And they definitely have to be protected. I don't have enough detail on exactly where they are and what the design of the building is to see whether the building design currently, we go over those monitoring wells or not. And so you'll have to get in more detail. But here's where they are. You can take a look at that. And you can get to the, back to the Regional Water Quality Control Board and ask them precisely where the wells are and have them lay that out according to where the building is planned. But as the staff report says, you do have to make sure that you don't interfere with the monitoring wells when you build the building. So those are a couple of aspects of the project that haven't been discussed much, and they do have a bearing. And they also, unfortunately, will probably have a cost impact. One last thing. If you're worried about vapor intrusion which carries toxics into the building and you want to have the building tested, you can do that. And HP and Varian, who are the sources of the toxics, they'll have to pay for the testing. The city won't have to pay for it.
Thank you very much. Now, Councilmember Holman, and then Councilmember DuBois, and then Councilmember Fine.
So following up on the speaker, did these issues of, I think they've been brought up before, did these issues of toxics come into play in the ARB review and the project design?
Yes, the, the issues in the staff report that Speaker brought up are standard conditions that were put in conditions of approval by Public Works Engineering, actually. But we do have a de-watering, waterproofing consultants onboard. Those things are being taken into account during the, the design of the building and the cutoff walls that are being installed to, to try to minimize any de-watering during construction. I'm not sure the exact status of the monitoring wells, if you're interested in that. I could ask the team.
Okay, thank you for that. So my first thing is a comment to, a general comment to ARB members, and I'm glad Mr. Balte is staying behind. If we look at the slide, you know, these slides aren't numbered, but it would be Slide 10. And it's an overview, you just had it there. If you look at that slide, and I'm not going to dwell on this, it's just a comment. It's like, as, as buildings get increasingly larger in this area, the large roofs, the large footprints of these buildings really do impede the amount of canopy in the area and change the look and feel a great, to a great extent. So just keep in mind, as you're looking at large buildings, it's not just the design of the building, but how it's impacting the area and the ability for canopy to exist. So that's just a general comment. Something I brought up before, when this was before us, and I'm referring to comments that were made tonight about the third floor glass. And two comments were made. One was that the glass would reflect the sky, and the other is the reflective nature of the glass. And I brought up last time the issue about bird-safe glass. And when I hear things like reflecting the sky and reflective nature of glass, it tells me it's anything but bird-safe glass. So would the architect or ARB member care to comment on that?
I remember your comment. And it is bird-safe glass that we are specifying. We call it bird glass that is only visible through a certain bandwidth of light. And when you shine UV light on the glass, you can see patterning that evidently birds see, but we don't. And so all of the glazing will be on the third floor of bird glass like that.
Okay, that's, that's reassuring to hear. Thank you. Agree with the comments of the mayor and the, about the brick finish at the ground floor. I think it helps break up the mass. It makes it a warmer building by far. So thank you for that. The last time, a comment I had last time also was on the, I think it was on the Slide 16, what would be comparable to Slide 16. Again, no numbers on these. It's the slide that has the public safety building, the public safety wording on the side of the building. And I made a comment, while there is landscaping, it doesn't, it doesn't have any kind of interaction with the street. And I mentioned, like, you know, where's the public art in this building? And I still don't know where the public art is and how this side of the building couldn't be made more pedestrian-friendly in terms of being more interactive. And maybe that's more of a question for Mr. Balte, as well as the architect.
Well, this image, by the way, isn't complete with all the landscaping. We removed the trees that are going to be there so we could, you could have a better view of the tower, just to let you know that it is an integral part of the design and that it's something that has been studied in detail with the ARB. So the landscaping is going to be much more intensive than you see in this image right here. Relative to public art, the public art artist has presented a number of public art sites that are under consideration. And Brad or Matt from Public Works would probably have more, or Amy, about those locations. I don't believe they've been solidified yet.
Good evening. Matt Roschke, Senior Engineer with Public Works Engineering, Project Manager. Yes, we've been working with the Community Services Department and, and the artist, Peter Wegner. He's been looking at a number of opportunities around the site. This particular location is not one of them. This, that part of Sherman Avenue is not really heavily traveled. It's, it just was not looked at as one of the, the main opportunities there. He's looking more around the Birch, the Birch Street opportunities inside the lobby, the plaza area, and, and in those locations.
Did you say inside the lobby?
Correct, yes.
How's it going to be public art if it's inside the lobby of the public safety building?
Oh, well, there's...
It's a public lobby with a double-height space with a lot of natural light viewed from a number of interior spaces as well as the exterior.
But what's going to, on what occasions would the public be in that space? Other than special event kinds of things?
Public business.
Doing business. But can I just interject here? Is the concept is that there's one single piece of art? Or is there the potential that there is art outside and art within the lobby? Is that, I mean, is this an either-or conversation?
I believe he's looking at multiple locations and would be multiple, multiple, multiple pieces as well. So it's, but it's still being developed.
Was, excuse me for interrupting, but I believe the process is still in flux, and there were even considerations for public art being located on the California Avenue parking garage. That's part of the conversation at the moment. So that would be a separate presentation to you.
I guess I've had this, I've had this same concern about how the public art is not integrated, doesn't seem like, into project design. Where it seems like, you know, a building gets designed and then, we're going to design some public art, and we don't know where we're going to put it or what it's going to be. And that, to me, doesn't seem like it's very integrated into a project. So anyway, it's, it doesn't seem very, doesn't seem very satisfying from a discussion and dialogue perspective for me. The communication towers, of course, that's going to come up. And they're on basically Slide 23. Again, I don't think there's any number on that slide, but it does have a number on it. Okay, Slide 23. And, you know, talking about public art, I think we can do, with all due respect to our neighbors who's, who are represented here, Los Altos Mountain View and San Mateo, I think we can do a lot better than that. And I'm not sure why we couldn't design something that would go around the attachments that are going to be on, on these towers that would basically mask them, but still let their function exist. And I see Peter Balte is nodding at that, too. So this is going to be reviewed at the ARB Subcommittee, is that correct? Okay. And I don't know if you want to mention anything that you might have in mind, Mr. Balte, or if that's yet to be determined, or has there been any discussion of that at this point in time? Through the chair, is it okay? I say yes.
Yeah, hi. You're quite astute, Councilmember Holman, in pointing out several issues that we're still focusing on, one of which is potential shrouds or screening on the communication tower. Given our recent experiences with some of the cellphone towers in town, we've gone through the same sort of questions and struggles. And that's been our recommendation to the architects. We're waiting to see what comes back to us. Our long-term concern, honestly, is not so much what we come up with right now, but what happens over time. These communication devices and equipment change. And once we've finished a review, they frequently just tend to get put on the tower as necessary. Our hope is that some sort of a shroud or screening can give us a longer-term control of what it will look like. I have no better answer than that right now. I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. And perhaps it could be a condition of approval that's added to the project, such that when the attachments are changed, that due consideration be provided to the screen design or whatever kind of shroud design that the ARB comes up with. Is that something that could be accomplished?
We do also have Director Cullen present, who's our expert in this area, if you care to hear from him about industry standard and where we're going with this. But certainly could be a condition of we return to them for approvals or we work with them, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
If you'd like, I can invite him up if you...
Good evening, Mayor Niss and distinguished council members. To speak directly to the aesthetics of the, of the tower, and which seems to be the concern that we hear the most from both the ARB and from the council. There, we're happy to look at any alternatives in terms of shrouding the tower. The one thing I would caution is it will increase the mass of the actual tower. We have had some discussions with our radio consulting firm that does most of our radio maintenance. There are some mitigating factors we could, could use, including fiberglass antennas as opposed to a solid antenna that's going to stand out on the, on the skyline. We're certainly looking at any alternatives that are out there, and we're happy to work with the architect if we can come up with, with anything that will increase the aesthetic look of that tower. There's not a lot out there. We've looked at communication towers. I think that the, the trade-off, if you shroud it, you're going to have a much larger tower that, that stands out more on the skyline. We only think we'll need two microwave towers or microwave dishes on the, on that tower, and possibly four antennas. And we can look at it setting up in a symmetrical way so it's not as, not as obtrusive as some of the other pictures that you see here where there's quite a bit more array on those towers.
I leave it to the ARB and y'all to figure this out. But when I hear, you know, it's going to increase the mass, I'm thinking that, the thinking might be that it's going to be one continuous shroud. And I don't think it has to be that way. But I leave that to you all to design, design that. So I'm, I'm not seeing that way in my head.
And we're certainly open to anything that might be out there that's going to, that'd make this look better. I just haven't seen anything in the research that we've done initially, but we can certainly...
Palo Alto's a leader in so many ways. Palo Alto's a leader in so many ways. I think we could make the public happy if we were a leader in this area, too, where we have, where we have minimized the visual impact, negative impact of these attachments.
We will, we will endeavor to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And my last question is about the multipurpose room. And can you show us a slide that best demonstrates the multipurpose room? And...
This slide, you can see it's off to the left, and there's a band of windows above the brick base. The height to the underside of the sill of those windows is seven feet. And then above that is quite glassy. And what we're hoping to do is to provide some sense of enclosure, because at times this is a intensively police department-used space, and they are training with specialized equipment and things like that that's best not seen from the plaza.
So why could the issues with that not be addressed with window screening when, when need be? Because that's, because that's not the ongoing and constant situation, so why could that just not be?
So I think we could certainly address it with screening, but to do that, we would probably add ballistic glass if you added more glass, which is going to increase the cost. So it's, it's a trade-off on what the preference is, solid wall versus ballistic glass. And I believe, Michael can correct me, but ballistic glass may be more expensive heavily.
How much more expensive? I mean, 10% more or 100% more?
It, it is more costly, and I don't have that answer. But I, I think the thing is, is that the space gets so heavily used with many people that there's going to be bumping in of the blinds and, and things like that. It's more likely to be less visually, you know, pleasing with blinds than what you see up there now, which was this beautiful rusticated brick. And there is a quite large band of windows above that that goes up to the underside of the roof.
So it is my last comment, but I'm not sure why we'd have to be looking at blinds. I think, again, there are like a lot more creative things to look at to provide privacy in a room than blinds. And I'm sure creative people in this room besides me could come up with a way to create the privacy that would be needed on the occasions where privacy was needed without using blinds. So I'll leave it at that. I do want to support the comments, though, by, by the ARB about the multi, the multipurpose room and finding a better way to address that. Thanks. Okay. In order that I think I saw the lights, it's Tom, Adrian, Greg Scharf, and then Cory.
So it's exciting to see this moving forward, and I want to thank staff and the ARB for all the work on the project. I think the lack of citizens here commenting is notable. It sounds like the process is working, so I appreciate that. Couple of quick questions. I'm not sure what slide number this is, but these poles, are these light poles? Is that what that is?
Yes, those are light fixtures. They don't depict the exact fixture, but we've presented the, an alternative fixture to ARB, which has been approved. But they are vertical fixtures that are night sky compliant that shine down onto the plaza.
Okay, thanks. I had some questions about the letter from the owner of the building where the Cafe Pro Bono is, that was at the end of the staff report. So she raised a couple of issues. One is about garbage bins, delivery trucks on Jacaranda Alleyway or whatever. So I'm wondering, how's this, how's the alley going to function for the businesses that are on Calav that use that for basically loading and trash collection?
Well, it's hard understanding that the use of the alley will not change and that the trash collection, as it's currently organized, will continue, that the owners of the commercial businesses on the other side of Jacaranda will continue to have their trash picked up in the alley. And that currently, in fact, the design does not engage or incorporate any of the public's trash collection into the design of the building, or for that matter, the California Avenue Parking Garage building.
So it wasn't clear from the comments, but it seemed like the issue was some conflict with the staff vehicle flow onto the alley?
I understand that, that comment. The, there are two ramps into the building. Let's see if we can get, probably the site plan, but that one will work. Off of Sherman, you can see the patrol vehicle ramp around 20% of the way in from the right, and it goes underneath the, the utility yard and accessory building area. On the other side, juxtaposed, is the staff ramp, which is right at Jacaranda, and it goes under the building right there. That's for staff vehicles. The only conflict between staff vehicles going in and garbage trucks are, would be brief, if at all.
Yeah, so I think the building in question is the one right there at that corner.
Yes, exactly.
So, I mean, will they be able, they're saying they use the parking lot currently that's there as kind of a loading zone. Will they be able to use that alley and not block staff vehicles?
Well, they'll use seven-eighths of the alley picking up trash when they come to that one corner. If they have to pull the debris box or the, the trash cans back away from the ramp, they can do so. I don't know their, the hours of operation for the garbage trucks. Is it in the morning? Or if it's in the morning, that is a very light time for staff to be entering if it's early in the morning, is off-shift.
Yeah. So I don't know if, Brad, do you have any comments? I mean, I'm just curious, like, functionally, are we going to run into issues, like, that they won't, they won't be able to unload there?
So I have to apologize that I'm not familiar with, with the letter. It's quite likely, depending on the size of trucks, that they might not be able to always use the alley as a, as a loading zone. What's the width of the alley, Mike?
Oh, it's 20 feet, I believe.
It's a sidewalk.
It has a sidewalk. But there is no parking in the alley, except for a few private spaces that exist there now.
Right. So I, I think with a 20-foot width, you, you would not be able to have a large truck parked. You'd be blocking the alley, which, which is the access for other people that come through there, as well as the employee parking for the Public Safety Building.
I mean, it may happen now, right, that it is blocked for periods of time, and to make the businesses function. So I'm just, I'm a little concerned that we don't have a way to deal with this.
It, it could be something where I'd have to look at it. We could consider potentially creating some loading zone space somewhere else nearby.
We haven't changed any of the turn radius or anything like that from the streets into the alley. And so the use of the alley remains largely unchanged. It's just the public parking lot that used to be there after the building is built won't exist anymore.
Right. So just an FYI, I'm getting complaints from residents that live on Calav on the upper floors that, like, service trucks are coming for the restaurants at 4:00 and 5:00 a.m. and stuff. We're thinking about loading zones and moving those on to other streets. I think it, it may be an issue. So I would be really interested in finding a way that they could use the alley. I think it would shield a lot of noise. And then could, could you just talk about kind of steps we're taking to kind of prevent impacting the businesses during construction? Like, will they be able to use this alley for all that block of businesses while the police building is being built?
I don't, I don't think we've analyzed all those impacts yet. We, right now, we've been focused on the impacts of constructing the Calav Garage, which is the project that's about to begin.
Yeah. So maybe it's premature, maybe when we get to the construction bid, but I think it's something we're going to have to pay attention to.
Yeah. There will be a lot of planning needed for that, and that's typically something that we're working on during that design development process, as we have been on the Calav Parking Garage.
So I, I don't think I'm used to seeing a project come to us for approval of application for architectural review. So I'm not really sure what that means tonight. We already approved the EIR, right?
You did approve the EIR in June. At this time, this is a project that includes kind of exceptions to the public facility zone. So that's one aspect of this. You're aware of them. The height of the communications tower is one. And then at Jacaranda Lane, there's the wall around this secured parking area. And those require exceptions. Of course, you did already approve the PF zone change that allowed for such exceptions, but it's really your chance to approve these exceptions for this particular project, as well as, you know, bundled with the architectural review application, which came with a recommendation.
Okay. So, I mean, the, the issues I'm bringing up about the alley, I mean, are those conditions of approval we should consider tonight?
So logistics plans would handle that, to the extent that any of these were envisioned as part of the draft environmental impact or the final environmental impact report that you already approved. You know, there was some discussion about use of the alley, but generally logistics plans that come with the building permit stage are where we tackle logistics.
I mean, outside of construction, I mean, I'm talking about kind of if, if the restaurant there in the corner needs, you know, an hour of time a day for loading, you know, will we be able to accommodate that or...
You're talking about the longer-term non-construction impacts of once the facilities there.
Exactly.
We're going to work on that. I don't, I don't know that you need to direct us to do that. We will work on a plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important to separate what is the actual sort of design of the physical, the building itself, even if we're triggering the, the need for some follow-up factors that we're going to have to consider on the programmatic or operational side, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think it's the location of that entry ramp and how it impacts businesses there. And I would like to say, I, I remain concerned about the tower. I heard the comments that shrouding may increase the mass, so I think kind of the same comments Councilmember Holman had. We'll leave it, leave it to you guys to see what's the best approach, but I think you've heard the concerns, so thank you.
Could I just respond, so that not all nine of you don't have to bring up the shrouding necessarily? I mean, I think the point's well taken, that there could be alternatives, some maybe don't even exist. We could macrame some stuff, maybe and hang them. I'm just kidding.
But my point is, I understand the shroud could make it worse, and maybe, maybe it's better not to have a shroud.
But, but those are things that a picture will be worth a thousand words. I mean, we look at this and start to see what the math is on different alternatives or whatever, it'll be, get pretty clear what the trade-offs are. You know, right now, it's sort of conceptual, we're just seeing what, what is in the world, and I think the points are well taken. So I think we'll have plenty of opportunities to see what the sweet spot for designing this, this tower would be.
Great. Okay, thanks. That's my comments.
Councilmember Fine.
Thank you. So thank you, staff, for bringing this forward, and thank you to the ARB for getting the building to this point. I'll try and be brief. On the multipurpose room, I guess that's one area of, of kind of discussion we're still having. I would lean towards it kind of favoring internal police operations. I, I think all our public safety departments have kind of made an argument about what the need is there. And having attended a number of these meetings in other capacities, you know, when you have a hundred or so law enforcement people in a room, it's a different kind of safety and operational concern than a general purpose meeting room. I, I don't think we should imagine this kind of as a community meeting space. This is our Public Safety Building. It's a meeting room for our police, fire, emergency services, and other allied agencies. And, you know, if occasionally there is a community meeting in there that's open to the public or whatever, like, great, but the primary concern, I think, is more, is more the public safety functions. And so I'd encourage us to think of the building or that unit of the building in that light. Just reading through the record of land use, there's kind of a three-foot setback on, I think it's on Jacaranda, which, when I was looking through that, I was thinking, gosh, that's pretty awkward and pretty tight. But I think it's really inherent in the, in actual site we've selected here, and there's not much we can do about it. But it really leads into my next set of questions or at least concerns. And I think Councilmember DeBois really had it on Jacaranda. That's my area of biggest concern. Even driving down there now, it's actually quite tight, and especially considering there's ingress and egress for police vehicles and others, I think we need to take a harder look at that. I know it's one-way right now. Is that something we want to maintain? Do we even want to maintain restaurants and businesses having dumpsters or other facilities in the back, or do we need to designate a new space for them? I just don't want any issue where the operational concerns of our public safety uses are impeded by, you know, a dumpster in that alleyway, or a truck loading or unloading for the restaurant, or even, you know, cafe tables at Cafe Pro Bono. So I think we need to take a bit of a harder look at that. Two other kind of circulation issues I was thinking about. So it's a block away, but I think Grant, you can't turn onto Grant from Park. I think it's blocked off there. And so I'm wondering if, if we need to consider anything there, if we're going to have, you know, police vehicles going down Park and they want to make a right turn on Grant and then circle back to the, to the building. Have we looked at that at all?
I would just say that we've been navigating that for years. It's not an issue. Most of our officers know, and they have alternate routes, whether it's Sherman or, you know, some other alternative. So I don't, I don't think that's a concern.
Okay. And then another one more close to the building is Sherman and Park. I think it's just a two-way stop right now. Are we considering leaving it that way, or would it potentially be a four-way stop?
So I believe it dead-ends into the apartments there, if I recall correctly, if you made it a four-way. So the four-way would be implemented with the Park side as well, and then with the bike boulevard there. I'm not sure we would want to heat on that.
Maybe I'm thinking of Park and Jacaranda.
Oh, Sherman. Sherman and Park.
Sorry, let me just bring the map...
The other road, Sherman, I believe, doesn't end, but it goes into kind of a service area for the buildings there. We've had some, I know we've had some discussion of this in the past, and I think our traffic consultants looked at it and didn't recommend making that a four-way stop. I recall part of the discussion was because of the fact that Park is now a bicycle boulevard, and we're trying to make those improvements and, and avoid having stop signs that they're not really necessary.
Okay, understood. I, I guess just, let's make sure to double-check all those things, especially Jacaranda. I think there are some issues there. Final comment. So, yeah, on the antenna, no more than that needs to be said. Thank you, City Manager. I might understand that these last issues that we need to button up are going to go to an ARB Subcommittee. Is that the idea?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll just say this politely and with all deference to ARB, but I would encourage us to try and seal those issues up in one meeting if possible, and just make sure this building keeps on moving forward. But otherwise, thank you all so much. I really do appreciate the ARB's work on this, I think, and the architect. I think this has evolved well, and it will be exciting to see this get approved and built. And so I don't know if you're looking for motions, Madam Mayor, but I'll move the staff recommendation.
There's actually a motion in a second. Adrian, do you want to speak further?
No, I, I'm sure a few, more of you have comments. I think the things that my colleagues have brought up so far are a little bit of issues with the multipurpose room, some issues with the antenna, Jacaranda, some other circulation issues. And Karen, what was the one other thing you were mentioning about potentially a...
Artwork.
The artwork? Yeah. So if staff just takes those as, you know, guidance.
Okay, so Eric, were you the second?
I was the second.
Would you care to speak to your second?
Only briefly. Glad to see this moving forward. I think this is consistent with our expectations, so thank you very much. I would like to also give a shout-out to the ARB for putting in a lot of good work on this as well. Thank you.
So, so I need to know now if you would put your lights on if you want to speak to the motion. Okay, Cory, and then Greg Scharf.
I just want to make sure the motion reflects that the seconder was Vice Mayor Phil Seth. Thank you for all of the work on this project. It's looking better and better, and I look forward to its opening someday soon in the neighborhood near you.
Someday soon, yes. Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. And I also like to thank staff, the Police Department, and the ARB for their work on this. I actually think it looks pretty good, and the architect. I mean, I think, I think it actually looks great. Couple of things. So when I first got elected to the City Council, there was nothing that happened in our plaza out there. It was dead. And, you know, the architectural drawing stuff always show people wandering around, enjoying the plaza, sitting on it. So I actually think we need to focus on some of the things that seem to have made that great. Having Wi-Fi out there, I think, really helps. So I would hope we'd have Wi-Fi. I think having tables, once we put those out there, people come out, have lunch. I think it would be a nice way for people to use the plaza. I don't know if you have any safety concerns, but I assume not, since the pictures show all these people there. So I think, you know, there is a shortage of places to actually sit and enjoy and have lunch and stuff, so I think it'd be nice to have the tables. And I think it'd be good for the Police Department, too, and, and other staff. So I would encourage us to think about how we activate the public space. The other thing I think I just wanted to basically, I heard on the antenna, on the, on the multipurpose room, I guess I wanted to get a little bit of a sense of the ARB thought that should be more open. You want to basically use it for, for programming, from what I heard. I guess I wanted to get a sense of what the City Manager thought about all of that.
Yeah, if I could, if I could jump in, I think we might be getting hung up with both sort of architectural symbolism and maybe even we didn't, I don't think we used the right language ourselves in talking about the space like it's community space or not community space. It is a multipurpose room, right, is the idea. I'm going to play the experience card, having built a number of public safety buildings and some regional big substations and stuff. I mean, the, the move in police is to be more community-oriented, so the, the fact that this is a, a public safety building... is a public safety building, it is also a community building for the community. I personally would say that I think the idea of having external doors out there into the space, it creates a problem, and actually is a kind of counter to the idea of people coming into the building, I mean, you know, and being able to manage the flow, but also this expectation that this is not, this is integrated into the public safety building, and therefore, if you're there for a kind of community meeting, most of the time, these would be public safety-related. You want to have a, but I think your point's about activating that space so that the public feels that this is there for lots of reasons, and that that space would be accessible for community-oriented meetings with public safety folks, would be an integral part of the work, so it wouldn't only be just for sort of police training. That being said, I really don't think that sort of separate doors outside work well in that regard, or that they're even necessary. And I do think that the department's concern about managing a community room as an adjunct to, I mean, we really have a small staff who are doing things, but it's probably even hard for us all to imagine how well this space will be used by the community, just because we haven't had community space, we haven't had space for the public safety folks in our space, let alone for the community. So I think the design of this building is really going to provide that opportunity. I just think about the environments I've been in, where folks have been able to come to things, and, you know, neighborhood meetings around public safety issues, to actually kind of be, you know, accept the formality of the entrance into the Police Department, even checking in, but then going into this sort of space that does seem to work, though. I think, I appreciate the idea of the wall-to-ceiling glass, but I think we've raised not only cost, but probably functionality and design aesthetic issues that are notable, and we can look at that and work through that. But I do think that this is not a matter where this is not going to be used for the community, but that we should think of, this also is not something that is up for grabs by everybody else to sort of use it. And I think we can easily, there's more programmatic kind of issues that can be developed over time, and we may, you know, it would be 20 years from now, and the environment and some ideas about policing might even be quite different then. We will have a sizable enough space, it'll be transparent enough, and it'll be accessible enough, I think, to accommodate a lot of different uses, but I think that's fairly stated, Patty, right? This was not to sort of say, this is not community space, it's just not, we're going to, we're not going to ask our department to manage a multi-function space as an adjunct to what they do, as opposed to something that's integrated with their basic core work. Thanks.
So, a couple of technical questions. I understand that tonight we're adopting the Record of Land Use action, and that seems to me the primary thing we're doing. I don't know what it means to adopt and approve an architectural review application, I don't think we've done that before, maybe someone could tell me what that actually means, why that's the staff recommendation?
Yes, the findings for architectural review are contained in our municipal code, and the process allows for bringing this to the council, any kind of important project, public project like this, rather than have approval by the director. So at this point, it's approval by the council of the architectural review application, and it's associated with these exceptions, if you will, that relate to the public facility zone changes you made in June.
So are all of those in the Record of Land Use action, then?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so everything in the review application that matters is in the land use, the review, Record of Land Use action?
Yes.
Okay.
And I almost hear what we're suggesting is that the council is accepting the recommendations of the ARB generally, and that informs the Record of Land Use action, things that you are specifically adopting. So that's what you're really working on, right, the Record of Land Use action?
So I guess I heard something slightly different, I heard them say that everything that we're approving that matters is in the Record of Land Use action.
That's correct.
That is in the Record of Land Use action.
That's what I said.
And there's not really a separate application review, there's no other separate document?
Yeah, no, I didn't mean that.
Called the Architectural Review Application, and that what the ARB, the changes they made are actually in the Record of Land Use action.
Yes, all contained within, including a condition of approval requiring return to the subcommittee with those antenna designs into the future.
So I agree with the City Manager, the way he framed the multipurpose room, I think that's right. So I assume we don't need to change anything in terms of the motion here, that, and I guess I also want to get a sense of, this isn't coming back to us again, right? This is now it, we've now approved it, and you're done with the approvals, and you're moving forward.
That's right, we have some work to do, as we discuss with the ARB Subcommittee on some of these few items.
On which items? The antenna, I got that, what else?
The antenna, the multipurpose room.
Well, what's left on the multipurpose room, we gave you direction.
Yeah. I think to go back and show them something that's consistent with that direction, is my answer.
Well, isn't the current building consistent with that direction?
Yeah, so.
I mean, not to find a point on it, but the ARB said, maybe you want to open the windows up, maybe you want to make it, we've thought about it and basically followed your recommendation, I assume that's what this motion does.
Yeah.
I guess that's what I wanted to clarify.
I think we do need to be clear, I guess I was seeing the return to a subcommittee of the ARB as a kind of follow-up direction to the staff based on your action, that this is not going back, and we have to come back to the council from the meeting in the Subcommittee with the ARB after this. You know, in the process of us sort of following up on, are there alternatives for how we think about the tower, or those sorts of things, we would be talking to the Subcommittee?
What I gathered, that's why I'm asking the question, I gather that the only thing that goes back to ARB, and if there's more, I want to know what is, is the tower issue. I mean, is there something else that we're going back to ARB on?
And again, it's in the Record of Land Use section, we come back to the ARB Subcommittee with the tower appendages.
Right.
We come back with some lighting that we're dealing with.
Okay, some lighting.
Yes, and that they started work on, on October 18th. And the third thing would be if the council collectively said, we want you to open up that.
But they didn't, so.
They didn't, so there is no need to modify the community, or, sorry, the multipurpose room exterior, in the least, with that council direction, to not modify.
So we have some lighting issues, and then, Peter, do you mind me just confirming that that's your understanding as well, or are there other things that we still need to?
Yes, I think that is correct, that we're not expecting to see the, any aspects of the multipurpose room come back to us, unless council directs a change in use on that. I think we asked to see a sample of the actual brick to be used, and so we expect that to come back to us.
Totally.
That's the kind of stuff that's appropriate for Subcommittee, to be honest, but I think staff is correct, that's all there is.
All right, so then, my next question is, when I look at the schedule here, why is the design development not really complete in November? Why is it only complete in February? I mean, is it really going to take, I mean, why can't you start your construction drawings earlier? Why do we have to wait till March? I mean, it seems like the design's done.
Well, what we're really looking at is the, and we have actually already begun design development, but this is more representative of schematic design, in that we've laid out the spaces, we've looked at the architecture, but when we really get into the design development, then we're looking at the integration of the various building systems within, and the mechanical systems, electrical systems.
Isn't that the, isn't that the construction documents?
The construction documents carry that even further, at their different levels.
Okay, so you're saying, so you're saying that the design development, there's more design development to do, okay?
It's not design development of the types of things that we've been looking at here during that ARB process, though.
Did you have something to add, Michael?
At the end of design development, traditionally, it's thought of as 35% complete construction documents, and so, basically, the design development phase engages a big team of engineers, structural engineers, mechanical engineers, and things like that, to develop these sophisticated systems that are necessary for an essential facility. So it's really, the beginning of construction drawings begins in design development, but the phase is basically a way to quantify virtually all the systems, to get it to a point that we can get a more realistic and accurate cost estimate.
Okay, fair enough, that's good. Well, again, you know, great job, glad where we are, and glad this is the final time this comes to council, I'm glad to hear that, so.
We'll be bringing a construction contract.
On consent, I hope. Thanks.
Councilmember Koo.
Just one question, the sign, so I understand the front of the building is at the corner of Bertrand Sherman, kind of, so the sign over there, would it be blocked, you know, given that's the main entry? I was just wondering, you know, the way that it's on the interior, is there a reason for that, or, I don't know, I just thought that that you would want it to be?
Great question, and that question came up in ARB as well, and what we've done is identified a number of signage locations where that is just one of them. There's going to be a monument sign out by the street, and there's going to be directional signs, there'll be a whole sign program that will be, actually, the sign program will be reviewed by ARB as well, and so that is another thing that we'll be going back for review, but the one that's depicted is the main, more architecturally-integrated sign that's part of the building at the moment.
Okay, yeah, it's visible in that picture there, so I was just wondering if there was a purpose why it was a little bit more hidden than the other one by the community room?
Well, it's a layering of signs, actually, and the first one that you'll see will be out in the public plaza in a monument, that'll be perpendicular to the sidewalk.
Oh, so along there, there will be a?
Right, right near the front entry stairs that goes up into the building, in the garden, will be a monument sign saying, the Palo Alto Public Safety Building.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka, do you want to comment?
Just want to say, thank you, staff, for bringing it forward, I first saw this on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, which was many, many years ago now, so, yeah, thanks for your work on this.
Okay, really good job, but I've got some questions. I think, I think the community room sounds as though it's going to be used primarily, Patty, good for you, you made a good argument.
And I would hazard a guess that probably half of our events involve the community, so if that helps.
Okay, but, but I'm looking at comparable Bay Area PSBs, which is your very last slide, number 35. Looking at different prices, different sizes, obviously, different cities. My question is going to be, though, this has gone from, if I flip back through here, this has gone from wherever it was back in. I don't see the slide right away, but going back to where we initially had a price on this, which I've forgotten, which, what was it, way long ago, 2012?
We were using a figure, $57 million, which we were caveat-ing, or warning at that point in time, was already based on old data and old information, so.
But, but there's no question that whatever we, I mean, the longer we wait to build this, the more expensive it's getting. I don't know what it's running, a quarter, but somebody had told me it literally was going up about 6% a quarter for building. So, so, Brad, you look startled, but I think haste is really important, so, when do we really think we might actually put a shovel on the ground?
Well, the timing that we're looking at is mid-2020.
On May 21st, we will take a shovel?
Mid-2020, and, and basically, it would be as soon as we finish the parking garage, because what we've said is that we're having enough of an impact on the Cal Ave area by taking basically 160 parking spaces away while we build the parking garage.
Right, so you're saying the first shovel full will be the mid-2020?
That's correct.
18 to 20 months from now.
We're having a little discussion up here about it, when it might be done, so, it doesn't sound to me as though it's going to be done till, when do you think?
Late 2021, early 2022.
Thought I was right. So, so, waiting that long, do you really think 106 is going to cover the cost?
106.
Honest answer, it's fine, but I think, I think we really need to look.
106 has construction cost escalation of 4% per year, built into the number until our planned midpoint, so it really depends.
At 4% a year?
4% per year, and what we've seen in some recent years are numbers as high as maybe 7%.
So what we're hearing, now, who knows what'll happen by 2020? I mean, at some point, we really are due for that recession, but I'm really concerned that 106 isn't going to cover it. I think it's, given the escalation that people are talking about in the Bay Area right now, it just doesn't seem realistic, and, you know, some of us will be gone by the time it's done anyway, but I think from a public concern point of view, we should have a really, not a hard figure in there, but a realistic figure in there, and looking back to where it was once at 57, I mean, it's hard to believe we're now at 106. So, that would be a request, that we really do try to keep up with where this cost is actually going.
Yeah, and if I, if I might add, Madam Mayor, I do think that the process of refining the design as we move through that helps us inform that, I mean, our discussion today is on the design itself that lets us get going, but we're still using, in a lot of ways, fairly generalized factors in developing these costs. That being said, I shouldn't downplay the fact that 106 million is a tremendous increase from $57 million, so it doesn't necessarily mean that we ought to be overly concerned about how much more that will grow, but I do think, as we get to the next phases on the design, as we move forward, that'll be a constant conversation with the council as to what we're seeing, the marketplace, as it relates to the project.
Some of us are not going to be sitting here, then, I, I hope that, and Brad, you've just started this job, so, you have a, I mean, I think you have a major responsibility with this kind of building, it's a big building, it's an important building, it's going to be a landmark, it's going to change California Avenue, much more than just a parking structure will. So, keeping an eye on that, hoping Measure E passes tomorrow, granted, which will certainly help, but I think, I've just been astonished watching the actual price go up on this, so, in whatever way you decide to keep us in the loop on it, I think that would be good. So, we're really making a decision tonight, in 2018, that we're saying will not actually come to pass with that first shovel full until 2020, right? So, two years from now is when you take that first shovel full out of the ground, right?
That's right.
Right, so, if it still costs 106 by then, I will actually give you a bonus of some kind. I just cannot believe that it's not going to, that, the Bay Area right now, you know, right now, given this, I understand that people are, the builders are poaching from other builders' sites, they're trying to come along at lunchtime, apparently, and say, you know, for whatever this is, come and work on my project, so, and I don't think that's exaggerated, I think that's really happening. It's hard to hire people in the downtown restaurants, it's, you know, as long as we're in this bubble, we're going to see a lot of escalation, we just need to remember, build it in.
So the one.
Chief Johnson is watching in the back as well.
The one other thing I'd like to add is that Michael Ross mentioned getting to the 100% design development phase, at each of these stops along the way that we have built into these contracts, we stop and we do an updated cost estimate, our subconsulents that are working on, Michael's team, do a cost estimate, city staff and Nova Partners, our program manager for these projects. estimate, city staff and Nova Partners, our program manager for these projects, do an independent cost estimate, we reconcile that, so, well, I certainly can't guarantee that we'll come in at 106 million, we will be definitely tracking this along the way and updating council about what we're...
Which is fine, and exactly what you should do. My, my clear indication tonight is that it will run over that, and just keep the council, you know, in the, in the loop on it. I don't know what it does, you know, frequently, we talk about what, what are the infrastructure projects are priority, what's coming next, and I think that in this case, you know, can we stay on schedule with our infrastructure projects, particularly the bike bridge. Okay, with that, if there are no other comments on this, let's actually vote on the board. Ta-da, it passes unanimously, thanks, everybody. Did we make up any time at all tonight? What were we doing on this? No, it's not too, too bad, it's about 45 minutes old. Okay, so, we're at state federal legislation update and so forth, we got a good update tonight from Jerry Hill, thank you, Jerry Hill. We are due to have both Mark Berman and Joe Semidi in before the end of the year, and at some point, City Manager Keen, when are we due to have the federal legislation people come out? Or are they not scheduled yet?
We do not have that scheduled, I'll take a look at that.
And then, if people head back in March, they will see them then as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, Councilmember Questions, Comments, Announcements, Councilmember Fine?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that tomorrow, November 6th, is Election Day, so I encourage you all to go out and vote.
Really?
Don't forget.
What a, what a great reminder. Also, Councilmember Fine and I are going to be heading down to the National League of Cities, I'm going to be there Thursday and Friday, maybe part of Saturday, and it's about the same, yeah. Yeah, they have a good group coming, including, for some reason, Musk is coming to, I don't know why precisely, maybe he's going to tell us how to run things more effectively. Okay, Councilmember Phil Seth, and then Councilmember DeBois.
On, on Friday, on Friday, I attended a, a Stanford Forum entitled, What's Next For California? I was on a panel discussion with Sam Liccardo, and I gave a presentation on pension finance in Palo Alto. The keynote at this event was actually the Governor Jerry Brown, and he had a couple of bon mots that, that I thought we, I got a chuckle out of, and I thought that I would repeat here. And the first one was that the easiest problems for government to fix are those that it created itself. And the second was, I, he, he said that it was, in order to govern well, it was essential to, and I quote, "pierce the veil of overstated advocacy," unquote. Anyway.
We would be wise to use that, we could put it up here.
Piercing the veil?
Yeah, piercing the veil. Anyone, Tom?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think six of us are at the opening night of All The Way, just a political play at the Palo Alto Players, and I think the City Manager might enjoy it, about LBJ, it was an interesting play.
I heard such good comments about it that we got tickets to it, so, they said for anyone who's political, it would really be a lot of fun to watch. Anybody else? Okay, in that case...
Just one thing, do we need to tell...
We will not see you in a week, we will see you in two weeks.
Liz, just one thing, do we need to tell any of these younger whippersnappers up here who LBJ is? Do we need to tell any of the young whippersnappers up here who LBJ is?
It's a coffee brand, isn't it?
Yeah, LBJ took the IRT down the Fourth Street, USA, don't you remember that one?
LBJ was so colorful, this, this, that should be fun. All right, we are adjourned.